Good morning, everybody. I'm Geneva Ralph, board chair this year. I love to call this meeting to order and thank you all for attending. And we have some great work to do today and I'm really excited to dig in. I want to first of all just say that it wasn't exactly the first order of business that we expected to be doing this year, but I am so thrilled to say this board is not missing a beat. And I want to give a big thanks to Patrick Phillips for stepping up and for Tim Inman for keeping us on track and adding to that workload, again, without missing a beat. For the, also, I want to thank Janet, that there's a whole cadre that moved up and filled things that you didn't expect to be doing this year. For the little housekeeping, please use the microphones carefully. They may be a little far away from you, but it's a dead room. We're online and make sure everybody can hear because I think what's being said is important today. We, first thing will be the roll call, unless you can want to do a visible.
Verification of quorum.
Right. Dennis Warden is not with us today. Connie Seeley will be in and out. She has other board duties, but she will be here shortly. And approval of minutes from previous board meeting?
Will this be approved?
A second. Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We will go into standing reports and public comment at this point. I don't think we have reports from the O A. So we're going into public comment. Sam Schwartz, familiar to us? Morning, Sam.
Good morning. Is the microphone close enough?
I can hear you.
You know, I want to make sure that I'm adhering to my three-minute rule. I've got my prepared remarks, but I was hoping to take just an extra minute or two to talk about the student code of conduct changes. Would that be all right?
Do keep it, we're trying to really get done today, so be brief on that, but I do want to hear what you have to say.
Cool. Just, it was great to listen to the conversation about the student code of conduct yesterday. My first impression is that I would vote nay. I would, I'm mostly okay with the language of the proposal itself, but my issue with this is that, in my mind, this is something which should have gone through the university senate first. And not having it go through the full university senate first is, in my mind, a bit of a violation of shared governance by the board, the spirit there is. And in my mind, if there's ever an academic policy or procedure that kind of results in a lot of discussion at the board level, I think my first instinct is to say where the proper procedures follow. And my, in this situation, it's my impression that there was like an ad hoc committee that was created and pushed by a well-meaning administrator, but it wasn't one that was directly created by the senate, although there were, you know, faculty, you know, from the senate participating and aware of the process going on in the background. I wasn't aware of this going on until, you know, I saw it at the board and I, you know, I show up to all the senate meetings and all that too.
Sam, let me interrupt you. This did follow process. You will have, we were, I think you'll be okay with the action we're going to take. Let's, let's table this and move on to your other stuff. I think you'll understand why. I'm not really cutting you off.
Certainly. And, you know, you can read my remarks and understand better.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you for understanding what I just did.
Certainly. I appreciate that. So, you know, in terms of my other, you know, planned remarks, which I think will be a lot more encouraging, you know, I basically have four topics, you know, quickly, an introduction, you know, I talked last time about how I had started some political lobbying. I wanted to report on that, make, you know, a potential recommendation. So first of all, I want to thank the board for having me. I want to introduce to myself to newcomers. There are a lot of them. In the last 15 months, we've seen turnover in the positions of board chair, president, provost, deans of business, education, the college of arts and science.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Jennifer Ralph, Board Chair this year. I love to call this meeting to order and thank you all for attending. And we have some great work to do today and I'm really excited to dig in. I want to, first of all, just say that it wasn't exactly the first order of business that we expected to be doing this year, but I am so thrilled to say this board is not missing a beat. And I want to give a big thanks to Patrick Phillips for stepping up and for Tim Inman for keeping us on track and adding to that workload, again, without missing a beat. For the, also, I want to thank Janet. There's a whole cadre that moved up and filled things that you didn't expect to be doing this year. For the little housekeeping, please use the microphones carefully. They may be a little far away from you, but it's a dead room. We're online and make sure everybody can hear because I think what's being said is important today. We, first thing will be the roll call unless you can, want to do a visible.
Verification of quorum.
Right. Dennis Warden is not with us today. Connie Sealy will be in and out. She has other board duties, but she will be here shortly. And approval of minutes from previous board meeting?
Will this be approved?
Second.
Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We will go into standing reports and public comment at this point. I don't think we have reports from the O A. So we're going into public comment. Sam Schwartz, familiar to us? Morning, Sam.
Good morning. Is the microphone close enough?
I can hear you.
You know, I want to make sure that I'm adhering to my three-minute rule. I've got my prepared remarks, but I was hoping to take just an extra minute or two to talk about the student code of conduct changes. Would that be all right?
Do keep it.
I'll be.
We're trying to really get done today, so be brief on that, but I do want to hear what you have to say.
Cool. Just, it was great to listen to the conversation about the student code of conduct yesterday. My first impression is that I would vote nay. I would, I'm mostly okay with the language of the proposal itself, but my issue with this is that, in my mind, this is something which should have gone through the university senate first, and not having it go through the full university senate first is, in my mind, a bit of a violation of shared governance by the board, the spirit of there is. And in my mind, if there's ever an academic policy or procedure that kind of results in a lot of discussion at the board level, I think my first instinct is to say where the proper procedures follow. And my, in this situation, it's my impression that there was like an ad hoc committee that was created and pushed by a well-meaning administrator, but it wasn't one that was directly created by the senate, although there were, you know, faculty, you know, from the senate participating and aware of the process going on in the background. I wasn't aware of this going on until, you know, I saw it at the board and I, you know, I show up to all the senate meetings and all that, too.
Sam, let me interrupt you. This did follow process. You will have, we were, I think you'll be okay with the action we're going to take. Let's table this.
Okay.
And move on to your other stuff. I think you'll understand why. I'm not really cutting you off.
Certainly, and, you know, you can read my remarks and understand better.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for understanding what I just did.
Certainly, I appreciate that. So, you know, in terms of my other, you know, planned remarks, which I think will be a lot more encouraging, you know, I basically have four topics, you know, and quickly, an introduction, you know, I talked last time about how I had started some political lobbying. I wanted to report on that, make, you know, a potential recommendation. So first of all, I want to thank the board for having me. I want to introduce to myself, to newcomers, there are a lot of them. In the last 15 months, we've seen turnover in the positions of Board Chair, President, Provost, Deans of Business, Education, the College of Arts and Sciences, some divisional deans, Vice Presidents for Research and Innovation, the Division of Student Life, Vice Provost of Graduate Studies, Chief Information Officer, Chief of Police, Football Coach, Senior Most State Lobbyist, Academic Senate President, just about all the various labor, campus labor constitu-, labor union presidencies, a good chunk of the Board of Trustees, and probably more positions that I'm forgetting at the moment. Now, there's been a lot of turnover from, you know, and then outside of U O, presidential searches have been recently completed or underway at Oregon State, Portland State, the University of Portland, Eastern Oregon, Southern Oregon, Western Oregon, Lewis and Clark, Corvone, Pacific University, and several major community college systems, just to kind of, you know, outline where we are in the state of higher education. Gallup reported this year that workers in higher education are the second most burned-out American after K through 12 educators and even before healthcare workers. The public is growing ever skeptical of universities and demographic changes in student preferences are causing great turbulence in the higher education market. Further, in less than three months, we'll have a new governor elected, turnover from 30 to 40% of the open seats in our state legislature. So, higher education is at a crossroads, and so is the University of Oregon, now under new management, essentially. But I, for one, am actually quite optimistic this year because despite all of our problems and challenges, I do believe that when we work together, we, the University of Oregon can really achieve anything as cheesy as that might sound. So, you know, who am I? I'm a grad student. Are we gone in two years? I'll either drop out or graduate, hopefully. And so, with respect to my report on, you know, lobbying efforts, you know, last meeting, I informed the board that due to low G P, I'd start at, you know, jumped above, and I wanted to provide a board with an update. You know, here in these situations, in, you know, public comment, I talk, I provide feedback, but with lawmakers, I try really, really hard to sit down, listen carefully and intently and try to understand where are they coming from? What are they thinking about? How can I understand their perspective better? This summer, I've driven all over Oregon. I've attended legislative meetings, visited the campuses of nearly all of our public universities, and, you know, continued chatting with politicians, and I have heard some earfuls. And what I quickly encountered was our urban rural divide. This, I don't think, was a surprise to anyone, but what was somewhat a surprise to me is that, in my view, there is widespread and bipartisan sentiment from politicians outside the Willamette Valley that, and it's difficult for me to articulate well, but there's a sense that higher education in general, and the University of Oregon in particular, isn't welcoming to people from their districts. And I found that across, cut across partisan, racial, and other demographic lines. So, with that in mind, you know, here's, here's my impression, and so here's my suggestion or recommendation to the board, which is at one of the next meetings, either next time or sometime this academic year, is a presentation by the administration to the board at the next, at one of the quarterly meetings, because there is perception, and then, which is important, and then there is also data-backed reality. Are these politicians right? And so here are some questions that I want answers to, and I am Snoopy. I'm really, really Snoopy with looking through data, and I can't find answers to them. And I believe the public and the board should probably have answers to these questions, which is, when considering, you know, traditional age, college grad-, college, you know, undergraduates in-state, let's look at those who are from the Willamette Valley and those who are not. And then for both groups, you know, ask the typical questions, like, you know, what are four- and six-year graduation rates? Are they able to find a job? And just ask ourselves these questions about, are we really serving the people of our state in terms of their geographic organ in, in a supposed equitable manner? You know, and President Phillips can decide which office and whatnot he wants to do that work, but in my mind, if we are serious about making U O a welcoming place for everyone, whether they grew up in Burns or, you know, just off the Burnside Bridge, we should be at minimum, you know, tracking and publishing kind of these in-state differences. And lastly, and I'll wrap it up here, I just want to note that today is an anniversary. Today, a year ago today, September 16th marks the one-year anniversary of U O denying the petition of 160 students, faculty, and alumni in computer science begging for higher GE salary increases. That included the petition and the accompanying newspaper article, and just want to end with that. But most of all, I really want to say that I'm actually quite enthused about this school year, and I think we're going to have a wonderful year all in all. Thank you so much.
Sam, thanks for making the effort, I know, to come up and everything for your engagement with the university and clearly your dedication. Would you, if you've got a minute, please visit with Chris Winter on your way out. She'll talk to you about the conduct.
Pardon? Oh, Chris Winter?
Chris Winter, yeah.
Do you want me to give this to Tim or Jennifer?
Jennifer, please. We'll grab those and we'll have those distributed to the trustees.
Thank you so much. Also, Tim and Jennifer are awesome, wonderful staff members, like, round of applause for them. Thank you so much.
It's one of those roles that the custodians and bus drivers really run K-12, and it's sometimes back, back office that is invisibly running things, for sure. Let's see, we next have our ASUO president, Luda? Luda Iskharov, right? Close enough. I hope, I'll let you, I'll let you correct me. Welcome. This is the first time we've had a chance to meet you, and I'm excited to hear from you, Luda, and also, I just want to say I really appreciate your initiative to have your body have lunch with us today. The lunches that we do as a board in between have always been one of our favorite parts. We, either just anybody who signs up, or maybe a focused group. In this case, it's your, your team, so we will be excited to hear what you have to say, both today and at lunch, so welcome.
Thank you, and thank you so much to Tim for making that all work. We're really excited for that. Well, first, I'll start with an introduction again. I know I got to meet all of you in the spring, but my name's Luda Saharov. I use she/her pronouns, and this is my first presentation to you, my first report to you as ASUO president. Today, my plan is to keep it brief, as I know you have a packed schedule today, but I'm just going to be going over my administration and some of our core principles and values, sharing some of our successes over the last couple months since we started in the spring, some of our challenges, and also, starting a dialogue about how we can get students to interact more with this board. So, to start off, I want to share a little bit about my administration. We welcomed about 20 secretaries in August to work on the executive branch as very well-paid, stipended-positioned student leaders. And we have three teams, and you'll be meeting people from each team today, actually, at lunch. We have a communications team, which is working really hard on changing the way we communicate with students and making student government more accessible to everyone. We also have an internal team, which is working on supporting our very active 200-student organizations that we find. They're also planning a very big concert, planning on bringing a big artist to campus to perform in the spring, events like the street fair. And then we have our external branch, which has been working with the Oregon Legislature. They've been meeting with the Eugene City Council. They've been working on university-wide advocacy. And just all around, we've got a super diverse, really awesome group of people that I'm really excited to have. And in order to, we know that we'll be faced with a lot of really hard decisions this year, where students may not agree with us, administration might not agree with us, and we outlined three main guiding principles to help us make these decisions throughout the year. So, our first main guiding principle is to have collaborative processes. I've been on, it's my third year on student government, and I found that in these governing bodies, we don't always be very collaborative with students, with our constituents, with admin, and even between ourselves. And so, we want to make sure that in every decision we make, everyone who is touched peripherally or directly by our decisions has been met even, met with, even if it takes longer for us. We also really want to value informed decision-making. As you know, ASUO in the last year has made some really big decisions, and a lot of people criticized us for not being fully informed before we made these decisions, and so we want to make sure to do really thorough research, and that goes along with collaborative decision-making, where we consult everyone before making big decisions. And lastly, which is my favorite one, is we really want to embrace change. We really want to reimagine how things work at this university, how students interact, how students engage, and everything that's traditional, that's like, people tell us, this is how it's always been. We want to reimagine that and challenge that and say, well, why can't we do it this way? And so, those are just some of our three guiding principles that will guide us this year, and I love to share because if I share it with you all, you can hold me to it later this year. So I want to share a little bit, just highlight a few of our successes in the first few months that we've been working, but this is just a few we've actually, I think, gotten a lot more done than we were able to fit in this report. But our first success is pushing our project around campus safety. Over the last year, one of our senators, Kayla Krueger, has been working really hard on a project on, to just pay for and distribute drug testing strips through the Women's Center. We know that roofing and also fentanyl overdoses rampant in Eugene right now, and just recently, in 2020, we lost a U O student to this issue, and so we are really committed to preventing that. But unfortunately, right when we were about to launch this project, it was flagged by General Counsel because there's an Oregon law that classifies these drug testing strips as drug paraphernalia. So, we decided to amend this law and, well, to try to amend this law. So, we have a state representative who has agreed to sponsor, and we've started to use all of our research to kind of build a coalition around this. And in the meantime, we, our Secretary of Campus Safety has also been working with a local nonprofit on figuring out how we can get Narcan, distribute Narcan around campus and into fraternity and sorority houses to keep students safe this year. So that's something we're really excited about and we're, we think is really important. Another big success we've had on starting a project has been around sustainability. So, originally, we started, our administration being really excited about fossil fuels and fossil fuel usage, but we also were really passionate about the riverfront and also the mill race, and kind of cleaning it up and making it more recreationally accessible to students, because that's what we as students want to see at the University of Oregon. We, we want to enjoy these natural spaces that are close to us, and we want to see the university taking care of them. And luckily, the, the Department of Campus Planning and Associate Vice President and Campus Architect Mike Harwood has been amazing in meeting with our secretaries and connecting them with the right people, and it looks like we are going to be able to fund some cleanup projects for the mill race and even potentially find a access point for students on the Willamette Riverfront, according to the report that they did last year on different opportunities on the riverfront. So, we're excited to continue talking about how we can kind of beautify and clean up the spaces that are close to us and make them so, make it so that students can fully enjoy the beautiful campus that we have. So, really grateful to Mike Harwood for working with us and hitting the ground running this summer on that project. Now I want to talk about a few challenges we've heard from students and both experienced ourselves, and we can continue these conversations at lunch, potentially, but the first one is around student housing. We don't really hear much from students as a student government, but we actually did have some students reach out to us around, first-year students, around on-campus housing and how, when they toured campus in the spring and they toured our beautiful new Welcome Center, the units they toured were supposed to be doubles, but then when they were registering for housing without any warning, a lot of them ended up being triples, and a lot of doubles that are meant to be doubles will be triples, and now, they don't know what those rooms are going to look like. Are they going to be bunk beds? How crammed are they going to be? How spacious? And so, we've looked a little bit into it, and we know that it's because there's a lot more students enrolled than was expected originally, and there's a new dorm that's not completed, and that's amazing for the university, but we just hope that in the future, we can communicate this better with students in advance and also manage our enrollment in a way that we're not kind of like blindsiding with students with the kind of housing they're going to be in. But another big passion of ours is off-campus housing and off-campus housing rates. We know that housing, the cost of housing of, like, in Eugene has been going up a lot, which has made it really inaccessible to students, but also, there's kind of a lack of tenant education from the university preparing students to be navigating the housing market for the first time in their life. So, I personally have encountered friends who send their leases to their parents, financial advisors to review, and other students whose parents don't speak English and have never, you know, gone about that themselves. And so, I've found that those different inequities, those different students always have very differing housing outcomes. And so, one of our goals this year is to work with the university to create better, more consolidated resources for students to navigate this market, and also just to do research on why housing is so expensive and how we can support students and that, because it's really important. The next challenge we had specifically in the spring was with the police department, specifically with the Eugene Police Department. As you might have seen in the news, there was kind of a flare-up after the spring game between police and several students, but after that, the Eugene Police Department kind of moved away from their education-first approach and handed out over 100 alcohol-and-open contained, container-related citations in a weekend. And while I don't defend all the behavior of those students, I, we also heard a lot from students that were afraid at the increased levels of policing in the community, and also felt like it was kind of an unfair retaliation, specifically the fact that the Eugene Police Department went ahead and published or just posted a list of all the names of people they cited on the front of their Facebook page, which students can get those citations erased from their record, but those names on the Facebook page will be up there forever and will pop up after a Google search. So, we went about this issue two ways. First, we found that we should, we would like to have an open relationship, a good communicative relationship with the Eugene Police Department, so when things like this happen in the future, we can communicate with them, and they feel like they don't need to leave their education-first approach in order to be heard by students. We can support them with that in other ways. And so, this summer, we met with, myself and my Chief of Staff, met with the Police Chief, Skinner, to open that relationship and kind of discuss what happened in the spring and how we can prevent it in the fall. But also, we really want to educate students. We know after the pandemic, the spring, students were, some students were interacting with law enforcement for the first time in their lives. And so, we started immediately sharing stuff from the Oregon ACLU, educating students on their rights, how to interact with law enforcement, but also, how to be good neighbors and how to prevent the police being called in the first place, such as warning your neighbors in advance, giving them your phone number, turning your music down when it's late, and that kind of thing. And our Vice President, Kevie, who you'll meet later, has already started working with Panalynic and the Fraternity Councils to create educational modules that will present to all the Greek life, to make sure that in the fall, when football starts up and the parties start back up, we can prevent students feeling afraid being in the university community because policing is so rampant. And lastly, I wanted to share that I know that most students that I interact with do not know what the Board of Trustees is. They don't know when they meet, they don't know how to access them, they don't know how many people, who you are, and I personally didn't even know until I was in this position, and that's something I really want to change. I want them to know more about us, but I also want them to know more about you, so I'd love to collaborate on creating more events. I know that the Board of Trustees used to come hand out breakfast at finals. I don't know if that stopped because of COVID or something else, but I'd love to bring that back, and I'd also love to invite you to come to some of our events. So this fall, in the week of October 14th, we have our annual street fair, or our bi-annual street fair, where we have a whole street of vendors and art, local artists, coming and selling their food and handmade things, and thousands of students come out to this event, and we'd love if you had the chance to stop by and interact with some students, and this is a tentative date, but we also would love to have an event where you get to meet not just like our core members, but all of ASUO, which is like a 70-person body, and we'll be inviting you to kind of a snack and social where you can introduce yourselves because I think it will make this board more engaging, make students feel more comfortable reaching out to you with their issues, and kind of bridge that gap. So, looking forward to speaking about all these things later today at lunch, and I thank you for your time.
Thanks, Luda. Any questions for now or do you want to hold till lunch?
Yeah, so I was, I noted your, your comment on the drug testing strips. And I can see the reticence of the university to get involved. But is there a history of prosecution of possession of these drug testing strips?
No.
And can, can students get by them themselves someplace?
Yes, like theoretically, yes. And I think for this year, we are going to find ways to like maybe have like the local food pantry hand them out or something. Just, I don't think we're allowed to hand them out, like fund them and hand them out through the university. And so by, by amending this law, we'll just be able to make them more accessible. I think that's my, my understanding of the law.
The challenge the university has is federal law about, we are required as a recipient of federal funding to be a drug-free campus. And so we have to follow federal guidance with respect to what qualifies as, as an apparatus that we should or shouldn't be distributing as a university. But I agree, I don't, I am unaware of anybody being arrested, cited, convicted of possessing something that is, at the end of the day, a safety measure.
Luda, thank you. We will see you at lunch.
Thank you so much.
We will now move on to the university senate report. Both Dan Tichner and Gerard Sandoval are out of town at other meetings, but we are going to hear on Zoom from Gerard. There he is.
Hello, good morning, Chair Ralph and Vicky's. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Excuse me, Gerard. Jennifer, do you know if we can change the view there from your computer so we focus on Gerard and not the PowerPoint presentation?
Hold on one second, Gerard. We're going to make you bigger. There we are. Great. Terrific.
Great. So for the record, my name is Gerard Sandoval and I'm the Vice President of the Senate. And yeah, Dan Tichner is at a conference, so he asked me to step in today. I am a professor in the School of Planning, Public Policy and Management. I also am involved in state public service. I serve on two governing commissions. So the first one is the Housing Stability Council, which controls the state's funding on affordable housing. And the second one is the Land Conservation and Development Commission, which makes decisions around cities' growth boundaries and other land development issues. And I do research on immigration and urban planning issues. That's just a little background on, on me. So what I wanted to do today is highlight the senate's initiatives for this year. And Dan highlighted about five in his report and I'll just stick to, to the three. But the first one is around service. It's actually around inequitable service. And this is important because there are, there is a lot of inequality in terms of the service that faculty and research faculty get involved with at the university. So I'm not sure how familiar you are with, how service works, but for a typical faculty member, about 40% of their job is supposed to be based on conducting research, 40% on teaching and 20% on service. And so if faculty, if they're overcommitted to service, then that likely impacts their research and their teaching, which is not a good thing for a world research class university like ours. The other issue with service is that it negatively, negatively impacts disproportionately women and faculty of color. And so that, those are like the two kind of key issues there. So we developed a senate task force on service last year. We're going to continue that task force moving forward this year. And we're going to focus on a few things. One key issue is invisible service. And so invisible service is basically service that is not formal. So that's not, for example, it's not like being on a committee or being on a formal task force or having a leadership position. But it's, it's, it's very informal. So for example, if I take my case, since I've, I've been at the university for 12 years and a lot of the service work that I've done has been around DEI issues and a lot of kind of informal advising, you know, to students of color and getting involved with community issues related to racial equity issues and so forth. And so that's all kind of service that's very difficult to, to quantify or even kind of, you know. Yeah, it's just very difficult to, to, to assess. So that's one issue that we're really going to focus on is invisible service. The other one is we've created a service dashboard and that's going to help just make everyone's service commitment more visible and transparent. And then we're also trying to figure out ways to provide incentives for faculty that, that do a lot of service. So that could be through course buyouts or course releases or stipends to help them with their research. And the difficult part is, is going to be figuring out what to do with the faculty members that aren't, you know, providing their level of service, right? And so those are the issues we're going to be grappling with in terms of service this year. The second issue I want to talk about is our emphasis on DEI issues within the senate. And we're going to do a few things in that regard. So first with our senate committees, we're going to have a DEI trainings for key committees. And I'll be, I'll be leading those trainings. And I think the key there is that when you talk about DEI, it's very context dependent, right? And so the key is really focusing on what the committee's charge is and how that relates to DEI. So for example, the committee in charge of, you know, faculty career development is going to, is very, is going to have DEI issues than, say, the curriculum committee, right? And so it's really focusing on, on that. Actually, DEI issues really also relate to the task force on service because there's a strong connection between, you know, overwhelming service commitments and the retention of faculty of color on campus. And so the retention of faculty of color on campus is, is a very important issue that the university is focusing on right now. A lot of that has to do with what's called cultural taxation, right? And again, this kind of invisible DEI service. So the Center of Diversity and Community just developed some reports that really go into depth related to issues which we'll share with you in the future. But so the service issue within the task force is this year is really going to focus on faculty of color and, and that connection in terms of retain, retainment. And the third aspect is going to be trying to increase the number of people of color serving in the senate. But that becomes difficult, right? Because we don't want to perpetuate kind of cultural taxation while at the same time, we need representation from faculty of color. And so that's, that's something we're going to be grappling with. So the next kind of focal area is deals with the new academic initiatives that the university is currently developing. So with the Ballmer Institute, for example, the senate's going to prioritize any approvals of degrees and courses and curriculums that, that are needed to make sure that that initiative is really up and running. We're also going to support other academic initiatives like the data science and environment, the sports and wellness, diversity innovation. And we've already started a, right away that we're going to, in the first senate orientation, we're going to bring up those initiatives just to kind of educate faculty and, and staff on, on the importance of them. Lastly, it's really building the capacity of the senate. This is something that Dan Tichner has really focused on, both when he was a vice president and now as president. And so there's two key things that happen in this regard. So the first one is that we're collaborating with a provost fellow, Jabdi Bala. And she's going to help us figure out ways to strengthen the committee onboarding. There's always a lot of kind of knowledge lost. You know, there's a senator served for two years. And so we're trying to figure out how to make sure that a new senator is, is well-prepared to take on the, the new duties. But we've also, this is really good news. We hired a senate secretary. This is a point five FTE position. This, this was with the help of the president's office. And so we hired Sandy Weintraub and we're really pleased to have him because he has a lot of experience at the U of O. He's an alumni of the law school. And the idea there is that he's going to help us strengthen our collaboration with the central administration. And it's, it's also going to help us build this committee capacity. And, and he is really interested, this is something I'm really interested in as well, is trying to understand how other senates at peer universities function. So that way we can kind of use, you know, their best practices so we can improve our, our senate. Point conclusion, I just want to make sure that, that you see me as a resource, you know, when, and I want to make myself available at, at any time, if you have any questions related to senate matters. And I would also ask for your assistance. Next year, my main task is really going to be focused DEI issues around, you know, with the senate. So if I could get your assistance in that regard, I would, I think the university would greatly appreciate that. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Gerard. Questions? Comments? Gerard, I have one. I'm, one of the bandwagons I beat is I'd like to know how you're thinking about accessibility in the context of DEI. To, to my mind, you really, we, nobody can really have the diversity that we want without including accessibility. And I mean, physical, cultural, but a lot of physical issues get left out of that discussion. So tell me how you're thinking about accessibility.
Yeah, so I would say that's central to DEI issues. I mean, DEI is supposed to be breaking barriers, right? And so if you have either physical barriers or cognitive barriers, you know, those have to be dealt with directly. So I don't know how the, anyways, that's how I would, that's how I would frame it. It's, it's, it's definitely a key part of it. And then if that intersects with other elements of exclusion, such as race or gender, it just kind of aggravates that as, as well. So I'm glad you're beating that.
Well, there are other, other organizations, institutions that have added an A. So it's D E I A. And so it elevates it to that visibility in the same way we've been talking about all of these other aspects of diversity. So it might be something to incorporate because we, I know we have a new person on campus in that role of accessibility for students, for instance. But I think of it also from faculty perspective. So it would be just something to think about, I think, that would be interesting to hear from, from you.
Yeah, if you want to follow up with, with me or Dan directly on that, we can kind of brainstorm some ways that we can incorporate the senate around the issues.
Thank you. Anything else? Well, thank you. Have a good year. We look forward to hearing throughout the year. Thanks a lot, Gerard. Thank you for your work.
Your service. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to turn to Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Janera. The meeting is a little, feels like an upside-down cake because we've already had a lot of presentations, chance for me to weigh in. Janet essentially laid out our joint vision for the work we're going to do. And then you all got to hear me blather last night at the, at the dinner. So thank you for your tolerance there. So I don't want to recapitulate all of that work that's already been laid out. But I do want to first start off by thanking the ASU President Ishkarov and also Gerard and Dan Tichner. As everybody knows, I've been here 22 years. The relationship between those organizations and the administration has not always been as strong as it is right now. And I think if we could be proud of anything from a central administration point of view, is that we've really worked hard to, to, to keep those relationships strong. But that's not our doing. That's actually the leadership of, of those units and our shared interests together as well as their philosophy. And I think you heard it from both of them straight out, and I couldn't be more grateful for that. And it's this, this feeling of what are we trying to do together? And also, what is the appropriate locus of focus? So Luda already spoke about some of these things. Rather than blaming the university for whatever our drug testing strip policies would have to be based on federal law, let's work together to think about understanding what it is to change that. Or the Eugene Police, we certainly do not control the Eugene Police at the University of Oregon. But we have a shared interest in, in policing and safety for our students, making sure it's equitable, not punitive. All of those things are shared interests and so we're very happy to, to work on that. I think one area that we've underperformed, both with our faculty and students, is the shared interest of funding with the state. Frequently, it's why aren't we getting more? Why is tuition so high? Or these sorts of things. I, I would love for us to, this is not a this-year thing, but over the years, to continue to partner on that. Those are the macro things and you heard I could not be happier with Gerard's statement. I would just say, just as a faculty member, Dan Tichner and Gerard Sandoval as colleagues are two of my favorite people in the university. So we could not be in better hands with them as leaders. Things around the service issues that Gerard pointed to is something that the provost's office has been directly involved in and, and working hand in hand with that. You talked about, you heard Gerard talk about how the senate will bring forward and prioritize initiatives, including, including the Ballmer Initiative. I'm not sure any senate leader has ever spoken quite that way before. And, and that's because we all recognize that these are areas of central strength for the future of the institution. So I do want to thank everybody at the university for welcoming me as interim president. I've had so many kind words of support and encouragement over the last few weeks. It's really humbling, actually. I am doing this role because I'm called to service. Literally, Janera called me the day after Mike Shul announced his leaving and then, you know, it was a call. And, and basically it was a call based on a deep history of, well, yeah, we're just going to keep doing what we're doing, right? And that's the intent. I, I am a faculty member, I'm a researcher, I'm an educator. I've, you know, mentored many, many graduate students and undergrads. But I've always felt that I can help this university do other things and, and greater things. And I've committed my entire career here to doing that. So this is great for me to take this year to help us achieve whatever we can in partnership and really at the behest of the, the board. That is our joint role together. And just to reaffirm these things, I'm committed to this, advancing the strategic vision of the university. We just kind of rolled that out at the last meeting. Suffice it to say, the strategic vision reflects the, the vision that we've worked on together. And there's nothing at odds there, quite the contrary. It's the things that I have thought we should be focusing on. Over the coming months, I'll be, you know, clearer about kind of what this next phase can look like and, and what our priorities for this year can be in terms of realistic accomplishments, with a real focus on getting things done, really solidifying things. Even as provost, Janet and I were working on, and you heard Janet say it, it's like now is a chance to kind of institutionalize, solidify some of the work that we've been talking about for the last few years. So that's all with a mind of not placeholder, but just accelerating momentum. I don't know. It feels good right now, this goes, knock on wood, whatever. It's been a rough couple of years, there's no question. We have persevered. When, when the pandemic started, I think I wrote it in a statement to the campus, but my number one concern is that we stay together as a community with a joint, shared sense of what we're trying to accomplish. And it hasn't been easy, but I think we have done that and that this is a moment where we can kind of double down on what that means. And that's occurred And that's occurred through the hard work of many, many people and the sacrifices of our students and faculty and staff. And so I'm very hopeful for a brighter year. Sam already talked about the level of burnout, and that's a palpable real thing. We need to be reinforcing, and Jamie gives me reports constantly about how our staffing numbers are growing and we're finally able to staff back up, for instance, is one indicator of how we're doing things. But overall, the ethos is we are better together. It's not just because that's a kumbaya Oregon kind of thing to say. If we truly want to be great at this university in this state, that is the only way to be great, because we just don't have enough resources to kind of each do our own thing. We have to focus on what we can do together and then use that synergy to really push forward in amazing ways. And that's, it's one thing to talk about that. That is a real thing. You see that occurring, and we will make that happen. And so that's why I'm very excited and as well as optimistic about what we can do. You can see that in the run of successes that we've had. We don't rest on any laurels, of course, because nothing is ever done at a university. But I hope you all enjoyed the energy around being able to visit the new U of O Portland campus, to really think about what the Bomber Institute could be. It was amazing to have so many legislators there and to see them, their nodding heads. Some of them were like, you know, really aggressive. That was so gratifying, and this gets, again, to Sam's point. What are we in terms of being a university that helps the state of Oregon more broadly? And you heard both from Randy and Adika about the progress we're making on the vision and the hiring and the curriculum development there. We did just come through a great summer. Oregon 22 was really a huge success for the university, and I think it's, I hope that many of you had a chance to participate. We had thousands of world-class, this was a world-class event in Eugene, Oregon. I think we have to own that and really recognize that it took a huge amount of work. We had visitors and volunteers from all over the world. I think the, I'm sure that there are more recent estimates, but the thing that was whispered to me, there was something around 18 million domestic viewers. One billion people throughout the world watched it, and we were very careful to make sure that there were Os in many of those shots and that we, you know, SOJC students built materials that were then used in the international broadcast, including the opening credits, which was made by a U of O student through a competition. He won the competition, and then that was the opening credit. So great to do. Other areas of impact that have just been announced, AR, I won't go back over, all of these things, just talked about the Department of Commerce Economic Development Funds for the Tallwood Design Institute, $16 million there. We are looking to understand how we can lean into more federal funding opportunities that I think will be forthcoming through Build Back Better and other sorts of opportunities. Again, it's part of our role in the state, not just to take those funds and see what we can do, but to see how we can help the state more broadly in its economic development. It is a state that, quite frankly, needs more focused attention in these areas. When we just think about how we generate resources for the public good, including addressing questions of homelessness and other social needs, given that we're generated, most of our income is generated by income tax, as we raise the median income of Oregonians, it gives us more resources to help everyone. So there's a direct and indirect benefit of thinking about elevating everyone in the state. And higher education is the critical element of that, and I really, that's going to be an ongoing mission of mine to continue to bang that drum to make sure that people recognize that. We get lots of support, including through transformational philanthropy, which is, again, what makes it possible for us to be internationally relevant research university that has such an impact locally as well as across the country. 2022 was the institution's third highest fundraising on record, third highest in, you may have heard, the campaign is over. We raised $689 million. Obviously, the Bomber gift was a big part of that, but it's not all of that. So $425 million for the Bomber Institute, more than $172 million in student support, including scholarships, academic support, and the Student Emergency Fund. If you remember back to the midst of the pandemic, I think I was gift number five or something to that. But thousands and thousands of people stepped forward to help our students. And we're very, very fortunate that the federal government also stepped forward to help both the university and our students. We would be in a very different place if that was not true. $235 million for faculty programs, $5.7 million towards diversity-related funding. And one of the things that Vice President for Advancement, Mike Andreessen, and I have talked about, and he initiated a number of years ago, is to create directed efforts in the diversity areas. And we recently raised more than $1 million for LGBTQ A-plus support, and there's so much more to be done there, and I know that everyone wants to help with that. First-time gifts increased by more than 40% during this period. So lots of good momentum through everyone who supports the institution. And quite frankly, everybody likes to support a winner, and so really continuing to keep the momentum going is critical. We saw yesterday that 42% of our bottom line is funded by out-of-state tuition. That's not a moral statement, it is what it is, but also, students who come here and invest in us deserve world-class education. They are sacrificing much to be here, and we owe it to them to make that pay off. And so, again, I look forward to personally working with our students to being out there. And you let me know where I should be at the street fair, one of my favorite events every year, so that I can interact with students, for sure. We are looking forward to welcoming a new class of ducks next week. That is my favorite day of the year, is move-in. Just, it always brings me back to my own sense of potential and feel like, you know, the kindergarten kid with the backpack that's way too big and smiling face with the picture. That's the energy that I get every year with our new students. So that's a great opportunity. We have not felt that way for years, and so we need to honor that energy and that opportunity and really lean into it and utilize it. We're going to try and be as normal as we can. We are careful, respectful, and safe with a lot of attention to public health. I don't know that anyone will ever respect anything that the administration does, but I hope we have earned the respect of our community with all the actions that we've taken over the last three years. It was a huge joint effort, but we maintain the financial security of the institution, the safety of our faculty, staff, and students, and we persevered to do things. And again, we did not sit still. Hundreds and hundreds of faculty and staff participated in planning conversations around initiatives that we are now bringing to fruition now. Obviously, students and faculty continued their great work on their educational and research activities. So we'll continue to work to support inclusive excellence and diverse campus through the climate survey, which just completed. President Shill was very concerned that we did a climate survey during one of the hardest times of recent history. So it's reflected in the survey, there's no question, but we're just now starting to dig in, and we look forward to bringing that to the Board, probably in December, our analysis of that and the very concrete steps that we're going to be taking to address concerns that we've heard at that level. We're a community that listens to each individual in the community, and so as we address the concerns of our faculty, staff, and students, that's a very individualized empathy of what they're experiencing and what we can do. Sometimes we have to be realistic about what is possible, but we will be aspirational about kind of what the progression is of doing our work better. So I really look forward to working with you all over the coming year. I value all of your contributions so much and our partnership, and especially, as I think Janera pointed out recently, you're well-paid for this job, and so it's, I can only view it as basically a reflection of the love you have for the institution, but also your belief and our shared belief that we can do great things together to make the world a better place and to do that through the work that we do and the opportunities we provide our students. So thank you so much, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about anything that's going on.
I'm going to move us along, just to keep us on track, but I do want to make one observation, which is that you mentioned that it's been a rough two to three years, and yet what you have been talking about in the last 48 hours shows that we haven't been sitting there treading water. And Luda brought up the very good problem, Jamie's never had this problem before, of over-enrollment, or high enrollment, super-high enrollment, I guess over-enrollment isn't right, but in a time where if you read the journals, everybody else is down, and we're up. So clearly, Oregonians are seeing the value of higher ed and, in particular, the quality of education at the university during a time where all of that was suspect. So good work. Anyway, thank you. We will move on to some resolutions, and then we'll take a short bio break and stay on time. So the first resolution, I'm going to turn back to Patrick. This is about a proposal that Michael Shill brought up in honor of Chuck Lilis.
Well, thank you, Chair Ralph, and all the trustees. I'm happy to speak to you about the resolution, and that's to create Lilis Way on the U of O campus. Obviously, I don't need to say a ton about the Lilises. Chuck was fundamental to the creation of this independent board and led it for many years through what I think would best be described as ups and downs, and just tremendous ups over the last seven or eight years in particular. This resolution is to honor Chuck and Gwen Lilis's longstanding leadership and contributions to the University of Oregon, and I'm pleased to request that the university name the portion of 13th Avenue from Vulcanology Building to the Lilis Business Complex as Lilis Way. And that location has significance. The Lilises have made significant investments in our world-class area, Vulcanology, and obviously, the Lilis Business Complex comes by that name not accidentally. So this is a request that was originated by President Shill last spring in the effort to honor truly unique service and contributions provided by the Lilises. And it's an unusual request, I think we need to acknowledge, and it's the truly unusual part that makes it not a regular kind of thing that you would expect me to be bringing to you regularly, you know, as part of normal practice. Both Gwen and Chuck have generally served the university as volunteers, philanthropists, and mentors. They've offered support in all possible ways, including, I think, I always want to lead with the hours of service and wisdom that they provided, but of course, they've also provided visionary gifts totaling over $26 million. They both served on the Lundquist College of Business Board of Advisors, and Gwen was a long-term chair for nearly two decades of service there. Gwen is also an emerita member of the U of O Foundation Board of Trustees, and of course, in June of 2022, Chuck stepped down as the first chair of the Board of Trustees after a decade of service. He just was instrumental in all aspects of creating the independent board and not, so many things were said already, though I don't need to go over them. So under Chuck's time as board member, we retained our membership in the AAU, started the Knight Campus, and established an expectation for excellence that, of course, has continued on, including the recent creation of the Bomber Institute. So they've given many gifts to scholarships, theater arts, athletics, and, of course, the business school. So I just, for a technical reason, I just want to point out that the dedication is really meant just as an honor and for university purposes only. It does not actually change the name of the street and especially the building addresses. The sign would mark a new street name in recognition of the Lilises' affection for and, of course, their unending generosity for the university they love.
Thank you, Patrick.
I'm happy to make a motion in favor.
Thanks, Marsha. Second? Additional comments?
So is it going to be called Lilis Way or the Lilis Way?
I'm not allowed to comment on that. It's Lilis Way.
Okay, on that comment, I'd like to, we'll call for a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? Stain? Thank you. Lilis Way, that's what they did, what Chuck did, we will never know, because it was amazing. The next is a matter of business. I would like to ask for a vote and resolution approval to add the word governance to the title of the Executive Audit Committee. This essentially codifies or externalizes what we've been doing anyway, so.
So moved.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any problems? Thank you. Okay, great. Okay, we are catching right up. Just a second. Ready for, oh no, we're moving now into, I'm going to turn it over to Ross first for motions out of your committee, sir.
Sure. We have five motions that, or resolutions that were discussed yesterday at Finance and Facilities Committee. I don't think we need to go into the content of each and every one of these because, if I remember, the Board was present, even though it's not on the committee, these were all discussed and unanimously approved by the committee and are presented to, as seconded motions to the full Board. And unless there are any objections, I suggest we consider voting on these as a block resolution.
I agree. Any, so moved, if you need a motion?
I'll second.
On paper.
Aye.
Okay, so that was the vote on all of those second motions. Now, I've been in communication with Chair Hornicker of the Academic Student Affairs Council. We are going to table the motion on student conduct. I will reiterate what I said to Sam. This did go through process. When it was presented, I will take full responsibility on this. I didn't catch the part that was, has been bothersome to me anyway about the collaborative. So what I would say is, I certainly honor that people feel that it's just fine, but I would like to have a better explanation come to the Board. I think it's a really important element of teaching students about civic responsibility, about honesty. I was at a school where they made an honor rule around crackers in your drawer, and it really missed the point about honesty and responsibility, I thought. And so, really, I care a lot about this one element, and I just want it really well articulated to me and so that students understand what we're saying. So I appreciate your tolerance with that. I apologize to anybody that's put work in this, and I don't think it's going to create a problem in waiting till the December Board, so. Okay? All right, we're back in good shape. Let's take, let's see, do we need, I'd like, I'd like us to go take like five, 10 minutes max, because we've got a really great presentation coming up. Can we meet again at 10:25?
This clock.
This clock. 10:25, is it off?
That clock's off. It's 10:09. So you want to do 10:20? Let's do 10:20 on. Let's do 10:20 on the.
All right, 10:20 on your cell phone. Thank you.
Right in real time. I like that.[605.82]
Recording in progress.
I made a mistake. We are going to actually tackle the presidential search at this point, and then we will hear from Carol on the AGB report after we deal with this. Do we know if Connie Seely is going to be?
Actually, I think we do need to wait a little while because Connie isn't quite back from her other meeting. So if we could do the AGB presentation first, yeah.
Carol, just pivot, girl. That's the buzzword. I have to say during COVID, we run a music organization. I said if I ever hear the word pivot outside of a dance class again, I'm going to throw up. But you do have to pivot today. Are you okay with?
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes.
I appreciate the flexibility because Connie Seely, who is...
Not a problem.
Should be important in this discussion, put it that way. I will help. So now I want to introduce you. Just a minute. Will you introduce yourself?
Absolutely, I can do that. Yes, I'd be happy to. I've had a lot of experience, 50-plus years in higher education. I spent 21 years at Penn State as a faculty member, and then a dean, and then a vice provost of the institution. I was the provost at the University of California at Davis, and I went from there to be the president of Kent State University, where I stayed for 15 and a half years. I retired briefly, and then I was asked, in effect, to do what Patrick is doing. Another Ohio institution, Bowling Green, had a kind of an unexpected presidential transition, and they asked if I would come and work with them through that transition as interim president for a year while they did a search. And be careful here, Patrick, because here's the story. Three months into it, they said, could we make this a longer appointment? So I was there for three years. Then I retired again and started consulting with the Association of Governing Boards. So I worked with both public and private institutions all over the country on governance issues, board assessments, 360 presidential assessments, strategic planning, and so forth. It's almost like coming full circle in your career, I feel, when I do these consultations with boards, that I'm leading a graduate seminar. So it's almost like coming full circle, and I look forward to our conversation today. And I hope that you will get engaged and interact as a part of it, because that will make it more meaningful for you. I've done a lot of work with Oregon institutions as you've worked through your transition from a system to individual boards, and most recently did, with one other partner, the research and report for the Senate Education Committee coming out of Senate Bill 854, and the arrangement that the institutions reached with the Senate to do an in-depth review of governance, as contrasted with continuing that legislation. So Tim and others who helped put this agenda together thought that it would be helpful to start with that report, with the highlights of the report, and you've had a chance to browse through it again, see if you have any questions, anything that I can perhaps give you a little bit more of the backstory or provide additional clarification. We jumped right into it with my introduction, but let me go back to the beginning and say that I'm really delighted to be here. It's important work that you're doing, and you're already, as I observed this morning, demonstrating many best practices, including what you will do at lunch with the student groups. That kind of interaction is really very, very important. So, to the report that was done for the Senate Education Committee and orchestrated through the good offices of the Higher Education Coordinating Committee. We interviewed, in various ways, more than 200 people as a part of this, representing all seven of Oregon's public universities. We did some individual interviews. We also had open town meetings. We had opportunities for written comments. So we got a wide, wide range of opinions. And I'll just tick through three or four of the key highlights and then go to your questions. First of all, a significant majority of all of those that we talked to supported the move to individual boards. They felt primarily that the move was productive and positive because each of the individual boards can understand and address challenges and issues that are unique to the institution. They also felt that there was a great deal more public access and transparency than there had been with the system board, with the opportunities that you all present for comment and engagement. There were some criticisms that the boards didn't deal with the problems that were brought to their attention, but in teasing out what's going on there, it really becomes more a case of people not understanding what a board does. So people would bring a problem directly to the board that really needed to go somewhere else within the institution, and then would feel frustrated that the board didn't immediately respond. And of course, you can't. It's not practical. You're not prepared. You don't know what topic is going to come to your attention. You don't have the right background information, the right context. So it becomes very important to find ways that are trustworthy in terms of getting the feedback. It may be that you hear three or four comments about an issue, and then you ask for a committee to take a look at that issue and bring you a report. It may be that you hear a comment, and it really has to be referred to Student Government or Student Affairs, and you want to follow up, that the individual who made that comment really does feel like it was attended to. So we did find that lack of understanding, and it's, of course, not unique to Oregon. So as you work with various groups, it would be helpful to try to educate about what a board does, why a board exists, what it means to be a fiduciary, for example. There's a lot of interesting dialogue about constituencies, and a lack of understanding that you do not represent individual constituencies. Even those of you who sit on the board as a representative from the faculty, the student body, or the staff council, you are, yes, you bring that lens, you bring that experience, but you are not here to vote the way that constituent group wants you to vote. You are here as a fiduciary, responsible for the entirety of the university, and it's your job to make informed judgments, informed decisions, often in an environment where there are competing priorities. A student member on a governing board, not just here, but in any state in the nation, might have to vote for a tuition increase that students at that institution are not happy about, because it is, at the end of the day, in the best interest of the institution, and as a fiduciary, that's the right decision. So that sense that you are representing the greater good, the citizens of Oregon, and not an individual constituency, is an important point, and one that many people do not understand. There's also a movement to do what some people have called democratization of boards, having faculty elect representatives, students elect representatives, staff elect representatives. You can see how that is completely inappropriate, based on what I just said, that you're here to represent the entirety of the university, not any particular constituent group. So that doesn't exist anywhere else, and it would be inappropriate to move in that direction. Your job as a fiduciary is to make decisions that are in the best interest of the institution over the long term, not just for the present, but thinking about long-term vitality and sustainability. So it does involve balancing interests and priorities. We observed that there is a significant need for really good in-depth board orientation, and for ongoing regular education and board development sessions, like you're doing today, retreats. And we talked quite a lot in the report about the important role of a governance committee. And of course, you just took action to codify that those functions of a governance committee exist within your committee structure, as contrasted with having a separate governance committee. And we found that all of the seven institutions had either a standalone governance committee or had embedded the governance functions in the charge to another committee. I mentioned before, but I'll come back to it, that there really is a need for a good process in responding to constituents' comments. It's one thing to say, have someone come forward and have a kind of rote, thank you for your comment, thank you for your comment, thank you. It's another thing to say, as you did today, I'm interested in a little bit more discussion about this aspect of what you've just told us, so that there's some sense that you've been heard, that you've been listened to. That's important, building that culture. Outreach and engagement becomes very, very important, and I already mentioned that you're doing that today. We have an inventory of what all seven institutions do on a regular basis to ensure outreach and engagement. It's very robust. Every institution has a whole array of opportunities for getting the board engaged in the life, deep into the life of the university, and that's a very good thing. But look for ways to communicate that really signal the genuine interest. It's one thing to post something on a website and say, well, it's available, anybody can go get it. And it's another thing to reach out to a group and say, we're going to be taking some action or discussing a topic that might be of particular interest to you, so we hope that you'll have one of your representatives attend our meeting. That's a different tone, a different kind of engagement than, well, it's there, they can go get it if they want it. So it's that sense of trying to find ways to reach out and be genuine in the interest and engagement. There's also commentary about unions. Unions were lobbying us, and continue to lobby in other sectors, for a place at the table the same as the faculty senate, or the same as the student government. In our report, we rejected that. We said that while unions have a role, and it's important to build good relationships between the institution and the union, they are not a part of the formal governance structure, shared governance structure of the institution. We also suggested that institutions look for ways to use their committees more effectively. Committees can be comprised of individuals who are not on the board. They can be invited as ongoing members of a committee because they've got particular background that's important to the charge of that committee. They can be invited on an ad hoc basis because the topic that's being discussed is something that they have expertise in. Your bylaws, if I recall, I didn't go back and reread them, I read them all as a part of this study, but I think it doesn't permit that kind of interaction. But of course, bylaws can be reviewed and changed. And I would urge every institution to take a look at how they can get more engagement around the committees, because that's where the dialogue and the debate takes place. You have business to do here, and it's kind of formalized, to get through the resolutions, but they have come from committees, and that debate and discussion has occurred in the committees. And often, people will observe a board meeting and say, well, they're just rubber-stamping everything, and they don't have the opportunity to see the kind of deep questioning and discussion that goes on in the committee meeting. You get, they're public meetings too, but people tend to come to the full board meeting. So getting more opportunities for more people to observe committee meetings and participate in committee meetings will change the dynamic around what people think about governance. We also made commentary about board composition and the board selection process. Each institution does it slightly differently, and there is a strong perception that presidents are naming their board members, which is not true and not helpful. But it would be better to be more transparent about the process for getting names to the governor, and more transparent about the fact that single names are not going forward with the expectation that that's who the governor will appoint, that the governor really is making these choices. And we talk directly to the governor's office, so we know that it's not happening. But that's not what the public thinks. So look for ways to be more transparent about that process.
Carol, would you prefer that we ask questions when you're done?
I've got one more sentence, and then, so, and that is about HECC. The relationship there between the institutions and the commission needs some work. There's more opportunity for partnership there than has been mined, I guess I'll use that word. For example, when HECC did their last strategic plan, they wrote it, and then they gave it to the presidents for commentary, rather than engaging the presidents from the beginning in the thought processes around the plan. So they tend to think of presidents as stakeholders rather than partners, and so we urged that that be rethought on the commission side. So those are the highlights, at least from my point of view. The report is much more detailed than that, but I think those are headlines that I would bring to your attention. So yes, questions?
It was an excellent report. You're an excellent presenter. Is there anything unusual in our structure relative to other organizations you've looked at, other public universities you looked at? Is there anything unusual in our governance structure?
No, except, there are only three states in the nation that have a representative from the students, the faculty, and the staff as full-fledged members of the governing board.
Are there, do you have anything else you wanted to say on that?
Pardon?
Anything else you wanted to add to that?
Yes, I think it's important for all of you to understand the delicate position that those three individuals are in, relative to their constituent base on the campus. And people need to understand that they are full-fledged fiduciaries. Doesn't matter how you get on the board. Once you're on the board, you have the full range of responsibilities and roles.
That's a good point. Are there any public universities that operate their governing board almost like a private university, that they are, there is a body that appoints the trustees, that doesn't go through the state, or there's not an overseeing board like we have? Is there anybody that does that? Is that not best practice?
There are a number of nuances, but the basics don't change very much. Public institutions tend to have separate 501(c)(3) foundation boards. That evolved over time because of concerns about commingling private and public money, and because in the public sector, you don't typically have control over who sits on the board, but you do in terms of who sits on the foundation board. So that's how that evolved. But there are some public institutions that have large boards and have some selection opportunities of their own. So they have like a little piece of a private board as a part of their public board. It is, I think, a good practice for public boards to act like private boards in thinking about composition, even though you don't have the authority to appoint individuals. If you have a matrix, for example, of desirable skills and abilities, and you have an analysis of where all of your current board members sit in that matrix, and you could look at retirement patterns, where terms end, you can look at empty cells that you think are important, and when you go to the governor about the next round of appointments, that can become a document that helps the governor think about where expertise is needed. I did that every year I was president of Kent State, and the governor's appointment secretary was always receptive, and often asked, do you know people who meet these criteria? And of course, I did. I had their bios in my file. But that's what private institutions do all the time, and the dialogue around what that list of background experiences and expertise consists of is a very healthy dialogue, and that's the sort of thing that a governance committee can do. So there's a little commingling there, and some private institutions are beginning to think about forming their own separate foundation boards. Because, and this is, it's not always this causal, but generally, there are concerns about the very major donors on those private boards that tend to control the governance function, almost like a superboard, and that's not healthy, because you've got many people who then feel very marginalized. So...
Thank you.
A complicated answer.
Can I just add one wrinkle in terms of avenue to becoming a trustee is that you can self-nominate, and there have been some strong candidates come forward through that process as well.
And that happens in many states, yes. And, you know, there are a few states where trustees are elected at large in the general election by the public.
You talked about that, but it was mostly community colleges.
No, Michigan State, Michigan, Wayne State, big research institutions in Michigan are treated the same way. It happens, my memory's not that great. I think it also happens in Nevada, but you see it playing out...
I believe Colorado has that as well.
You see it playing out right now, because there's, in the public press, there's a major issue about trustees at Michigan State trying to oust a president, and it's around political lines. And you had a situation a few years ago at Wayne State where four trustees were elected from one party and four from another, and they couldn't make any decisions because they were always tied. So it's not a healthy situation, but it does exist in a few places.
You mentioned that the support was overwhelming for the current system of governance in the Oregon higher education. And we're only 10 years, I think, if I'm not mistaken, into this new process. So are there any substantive arguments for a reversal or for some change? Or should the board be alerted in some way of a potential for going back to the old method?
I don't think so. Based on conversations with Senator Dembrough throughout this process, I think he was generally interested in what could be improved, but not looking for a reversal of decisions. And we testified, after we presented our oral or written report, we testified before the entire committee, we did not get a sense that that was a kind of a buried objective at all. It was not 100% support for the new model. There were some criticisms, but a significant majority is in favor.
Just, if you could tell me, what were the criticisms?
Well, there's a sense that if you, this is going to be difficult to say, because it's very, very complicated, but in effect, if you are a constituent and you don't like what the board has done, there's no place to go. And there was a feeling that if there was a system, you had a place to go. Well, of course, you didn't, because if the system did something that you didn't like, that was the end of it. So at some point, the process stops and a decision is made. But that was sort of the underlying sentiment, was that, well, first of all, the presidents are naming their own board members, and if we don't like what's happening, we don't have any place to go.
Can I follow up on that real quick?
Jenny.
There was a line in your report that I think speaks to the last question, and maybe you could elaborate a bit, because I didn't understand it. It says, "Some individuals are dismayed over the residual effects of recent retrenchment." I'm a new board member, so maybe I'm, what's that referring to?
Well, I think anytime an institution does something that people are unhappy with or concerned about, they want to find a place to blame. And whenever you have significant budget issues, and of course, we were doing this in COVID, so there were tensions and frustrations around things like that.
There is one Oregon university too, that not long ago did go through the formal process of retrenchment, and that was Southern Oregon.
That's a term that of art, then, I mean, that I maybe don't understand.
Yeah, define retrenchment.
I don't think I'm the best to define it. Jamie?
Carol?
I'm not either the best.
I think the essence was extreme budget crisis, which authorized more extreme actions for them to reduce costs at a pretty rapid pace, which created a tremendous amount of tension within their community.
It's a budgetary term. It doesn't mean just digging new trash.
And we can get back to you with more kind of formal definitions of what that process looked like.
And we did find that in places where there was current controversy, there were more people who came to the town hall opportunities and provided written comment.
Always, yeah.
You could see that pattern developing.
Can I make a quick comment?
Carol?
No, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Dotia, go ahead, and then Patrick.
Thank you. It always kind of struck me as weird that the state moved from OUS system to the boards and then created the HECC, and didn't really create a way for those seven universities to really have a stake in a conversation with the HECC. Is this a normal system? If it is, like, where is it working really well?
That's not uncommon, and there are tensions everywhere. There are, in places where there are individual boards, there tends to be a state coordinating board of some type that tries to keep the peace between institutions around duplicate degree programs, research opportunities, things like that. And institutions don't like to be told what they can't do. So there's always tension around that. And often, there's a budget management influence component in terms of what the centralized coordinating board can do, so they hold an important trump card.
They do. And is there a place where the partnership between the coordinating body and the universities works really well, that we could sort of look to as an example?
It ebbs and flows. You know, having spent nearly 20 years in Ohio, directly engaged, there were times when it was an extremely effective partnership, and other times when it was not. And often, it was the governor, and what the governor was expecting. I mean, at one point, the governor put all the presidents in a room and said, don't come out until you figure out how we should allocate capital dollars. And that's a pretty big incentive to figure it out.
Two years ago.
And there was, at one point, there was a chancellor of that central system who wanted to name the presidents, and that was extremely controversial, as you might imagine, because the boards saw that as one of their, and it is, one of their major responsibilities. That was a leadership issue, where you just had to work it through with somebody who wanted power that wasn't really appropriate for the office.
Thank you.
Shall we move on to the...
I think we got two.
Just one quick comment, because I think it's apropos to those. First, thank you, Dr. Cartwright, for this very thoughtful work. I got to say, it's super useful, and unlike most external consultant reports, it doesn't advocate that the University of Oregon spend more money on something, so that's never happened. But I just wanted to get to both Dotia and Tim's comment about who would advocate for something different. I do think that they fall into two camps, and Dr. Cartwright already illustrated one. It comes down to authority and power. So, and I think it is a misunderstanding of what a board would do, but students would like to have more power on a board so that they could make the board, you know, lower tuition or do whatever, or the unions would like to be on so that they could make the board raise salaries. Obviously, that's not the function of a board formally, so they would just be frustrated at that activity. But that's the advocacy. But I think more relevant to Oregon is, in the transition, is this sense that there's a loss of coordination. a loss of coordination among institutions and what that costs either the state or the students in the state. And I think it's, that's also a misunderstanding, but it comes out of a need for a deeper relationship with the coordinating commission, as Toya pointed out, and the universities. We have a council of presidents that is independent and independently established from, from the creation of the HECC. I spent the last three years trying to build this sense of partnership among those. It's very tenuous, especially with the reduced resources. But you already highlighted something that has been quite frustrating, I think, to all the universities. Theoretically, the universities should be experts on higher education, and we are never asked to bring that expertise forward. Things are given to us that we then respond to rather than co-creating, and that is something that I hope that over the next few years, we start shifting the state, because there's a strong joint interest in doing that. So I think it's that lack of coordination and that somehow we could do transfers better or we could make the strategic allocation of resources differently or something like that, that a central body would do. I think historically, if we look back at it, that was not true, but that's the longing for some sort of centralized power that would force universities to, to do something different.
And that's a nice elaboration on our comment in the report, that the institutions need to be seen as partners, not, not just stakeholders. We also recommended that the governor convene annually, or perhaps once every two to three years, a statewide meeting that would include board members, presidents, HECC, and talk about the strategic issues facing the state and how higher education can contribute solutions to those issues. That is done in many states and is very successful.
Lisa?
Quick question, Carol. Thank you. Excellent report, like everybody has noted. You mention communication, education of the board, and also the community of knowing what the board is and does. Did you see at all a way or a university that was putting information out to its community that was being readily visible and easy to read and understand about the board and its mission and how it works, as opposed to, as you mentioned, sometimes just putting something on a website that isn't really, people have to go search for it? How, how can we communicate who we are and what we are and our mission in a, in a way that's thoughtful to our community?
I think the more outreach you have and the more opportunities that you can take advantage of to get beyond the formal structures, which are important as a part of the overall shared leadership, the better you'll be in terms of being understood. And once, once individuals have an interpersonal opportunity with a board member, they come away with a very different sense of people who really care about the institution, who are passionate. It's not just, the suits are coming to town for a day and a half. It's, it's, wow. We really, we really had an exchange that helped us understand. And the way you ask questions that, that really communicates, "I want to hear from you. I'm not here to tell you what we do. I want your perspectives." There's one example in the report, I don't remember the institution, but someone took a group of board members, the board professional organized it, took a group of board members to meet with a committee that was focused on food insecurity and homelessness. And they had a conversation about the lived experiences of these students that opened the board members' eyes to the kinds of things that students were coping with and what the institution was doing that was helpful and what more it might do. There was not a formal vote to be taken or a formal proposal. It was a getting better acquainted with an issue kind of a meeting that, that ripples across an institution. You know, those board members came, they talked with us, they really listened, they seemed to understand what we were living through, and we, we feel good about what happened there. Those kinds of things done multiple times around multiple topics can help build that culture. It's a culture of being engaged and caring that gets played out in a thousand different ways and gets built up over time.
So the board reaching out as opposed to just someone coming and telling us about student insecurity in the food area?
Right. And watching for those opportunities.
I think you did that, we did that last year with the, for instance, with the Health Center and try to drill down.
Carol, along those lines, don't you think, is it also important for us to be guarded and watch that fine line between being informed and then taking action where it's not our place?
Yeah, you always have your board hat on. Even if you don't put it on, somebody will put it on for you. So you have to be careful, because as board members, you do not have any authority. Your authority resides in the body, the, the board as a board. Now, each individual obviously contributes to that, but the authority resides in the board as a board. So you do have to be careful that you're not signaling approval when, number one, you don't have the authority to do that, and number two, you don't want to miscommunicate. So sometimes you just have to be explicit. "I'm listening to you. I hear what you're saying. This might be something that we take up through the formal channels of committee work and so on in the future, but I, I'm not making a commitment to you." And people love at receptions, for example, to buttonhole a board member and, you know, just your natural human tendency to shake your head yes and to kind of make affirming body language. People go away saying, "Whoa, okay, they're, they're going to approve that." And of course, that wasn't the case at all. So you do have to be careful. Very good point.
I'd like to just make one quick observation, because it's, it has to be quick because it's too big of a topic. But in the years that, as we developed the board, those two years of defining retention and delegation of authority, all of that, the big cloud of non-understanding was around the concept of shared governance. It, I think, engendered a lot of distrust from the faculty side, confusion from the community, what do we mean by that? Because other boards don't have, that I've dealt with, that I've been on, have that entity of, you know, a culture of shared governance and even a.
Right.
So I think that's something that we could continue to study and, and understand and see how that's playing out over these 10, 12 years.
It's a very good point, and it's happening all over the country. Institutions are struggling with how to get it right in terms of shared governance. But it is a hallmark of higher education, and it differentiates corporate boards and other kinds of not-for-profit organizations from higher education boards. The autonomy, the self-regulation through accreditation, shared governance and academic freedom, those are all variables that characterize higher education and make higher education governance different. Now, there are certain principles of governance, like what it means to be a fiduciary, that are generalizable, but you're being a fiduciary in a different kind of context than you are in a corporate setting, for example. And one of the things that I think is very helpful in helping boards understand the value of shared governance is to think about what you do in your own business organizations. You do not solve every problem in the CEO's office. You take it to the division in the company where you have the expertise, and you ask for thoughtful problem solving. And that's in effect what shared governance is. Because the, the major responsibilities of the faculty, for example, are in curriculum, academic program development, and determining membership in the faculty through criteria for appointments, tenure, promotion, et cetera. And when you think about it, Patrick is a biologist, he doesn't know as president what makes a good historian. He might, I mean, he might have a, a deep avocation in history, but, but generally speaking, that's not his discipline. So he needs to rely on the historians when a proposal comes through that has something to do with history. It's the same thing you're doing in your business. You're relying on those with expertise to bring forward. Now, one of the problems is that some involved in shared governance want to make everything an issue. That is their expertise. And, you know, faculty basically don't have the expertise to tell you where to put a new parking lot. Unless they're a civil engineer, then they might have some idea. But, but you get the point. You have to be willing to talk with each other, have a dialogue and say, you know, "Let's, let's use some common sense here. We really want to be passionate about protecting your role as the experts in the academic realm." But there are people who have other expertise in other elements, and you can't make everything academic just because it happens on a campus. So that's where people get into trouble. There's this sort of overreach. We, we should move on to some of these basic principles of governance, and then perhaps if there's time, come back to any of this. And we've already sort of intertwined the, the two topics. We are going to talk about principles of trusteeship, and the, the prior conversations that you've had along these lines have been about the board as a board. What the, what's the board's role, responsibilities, how do boards function, et cetera. We're taking a slightly different approach today and talking about how individuals contribute to the board with the idea that the individual action then leads, you know, the more effective the individual actions are, the more effective the full board can be. So we're, we're talking about both a combination of attitudes and actions that can lead to board effectiveness. If I've got this right, there we go. And every board, you were asking me to make some comparisons around the country, every board has these challenges. You're, you're an orchestra, but you don't rehearse very often. You've got a lot of conductors. Or, as I like to say, now that football season is launched, this is a team sport, but you're a room full of quarterbacks. That's basically how, how you're asked to be on the board. You've got, you've got that kind of level of experience. So you need to be intentional about building the board culture and making governance work. And the challenge is to try to get aligned around the best interests of the institution relative to its mission when you have these challenges, again, which all boards have. So we're going to look at principles of trusteeship in three buckets. Understanding governance, thinking strategically, and leading by example. And you, I've got a placemat for you to help guide this discussion. Start those going around. I guess I better keep one for myself, although it's. This really takes this pie chart and breaks it down by looking at the buckets, the three buckets, and then the principles. There are nine principles there. And then for each one of the principles, it takes a look at what does it mean in terms of being a fiduciary? What does it mean in terms of being a member of the team, this collection that is the board? And then what does it mean for you as an individual? So that can be your, your marker as we work through this discussion. So we'll start with the, with the first bucket, which is understanding governance. And the first principle you see outlined there. You have a fiduciary responsibility for the sustainability of the entire enterprise. So your work as a fiduciary is tied to the board's collective responsibilities. As a member of the team, you're working with your fellow board members in collaboration, and you're working with the administration. And then as an individual, you're bringing your expertise and your experience, your time, your talent, your generosity of spirit and support. And the work that you do can be happening inside the boardroom or outside of it. So you've got a duty of care to make the best possible decision for the long-term vitality of the institution. You have a collective role as a member of this team that is the board, and you have an obligation as an individual to show up and be prepared. And it might be interesting to think about a couple of questions for your own self-reflection. What is your level of engagement as a board member? Are there things that you get engaged with between meetings? Is there something that's preventing you from being more engaged? I'm not going to ask you to answer these questions publicly, but be reflecting. How does this board function? What does it do very well? What can you be very proud of? Where are you, where are you seeking improvement? Think about a situation where the board has received an update from the Student Affairs Committee about campus health and safety. The report gives data about the last 10 years in terms of how the population has increased and the number of students seen by the counseling center has increased dramatically. When this committee report came forward, one member of the board said, "I know about this. My son's really struggling with anxiety, and I've seen several social media posts about how others are dealing with this." And then several other board members chimed in with similar stories. And then a board member said, "Well, how are we dealing with student mental health issues on our campus?" And the director of Student Affairs explained the various programs that the college had in place. And then one trustee said, "Well, what else might we be doing?" And at that point, the finance committee chair got up and said, "Well, wait a minute. We can't do anything else because it's not baked in the budget. We'll have to wait till next year." What's your reaction to that dynamic?
I don't think that would happen here today.
You don't think it would happen here?
I don't think we would do that, no. But that's probably not your point. But we'd hope you'd have open dialogue. Also would hope that we don't start trying to solve how we handle mental health on campus. So you'd hope there'd be a crossroads that they would meet of not stopping it based on money, but also, because it's a long-term issue, but also making sure the university is, is leading that discussion. We're hearing, making sure they're doing something, not us doing it for them.
It's a great response. Understanding the lane, understanding the differences between governance and management. Other reactions?
Well, we don't have that, that fine-tooth control on budget either. I mean, what we could do is go to Jamie and say, "Can you move some money around to help deal with this?" Or are there other constructive things that we could do that may be planned for future budgeting? I mean, I think there's, you don't just cut the discussion off is, is what I don't see us doing. We're all looking at our chair of the Finance Committee that's been here for 10 years.
Who would never do a thing like that, right?
Would never do a thing like that.
Well, but, but the, I think one other point in that little vignette is that those kinds of discussions are good. It's the chair's role then to sort of sum up and make a comment about how we're going to deal with them. And inappropriate for someone to jump in and just stop the conversation like that, which is the point we were trying to get across in that, in that little vignette. But no question is a bad question. And detailed questions do not signal micromanagement. Often, you have to ask detailed questions to do the due diligence to be a fiduciary. It's when you start telling institutions what to do that you cross that line. And, and a lot of people think, "Oh, we can't get in the weeds. We can't ask those detailed questions." Absolutely, you should be asking detailed questions, but you should not be then moving to directing what the institution ought to be doing. So second piece, that second principle in that bucket, you can see it there. I refuse to read it to you. I understand death by PowerPoint, so you can take a look at that. But, but here, we're basically talking about shared governance, talking about delegation of authority. The board has delegated to the president abundant authority to lead and manage the institution. President has in turn President has in turn delegated to many other officers of the institution and shared governance groups within the institution. And what you want to do here is work together toward accomplishing that shared vision. And here again, reflect. What do you bring to the board? What knowledge and skills do you have that can be helpful to the institution and the board? How do you interact, both formally and informally as a board, with members of the administration? How does shared governance work? I heard the president earlier say that this is a good time for shared governance. And in our earlier discussion, I said some institutions are struggling, some are feeling like they're in a good place. It ebbs and flows and you want to keep your eye on it for sure. So here's another story. The Advancement Committee Chair emailed the university president and said, our chief development officer has done a fantastic job this year and we think a sizable bonus is in order. So we hope you keep that in mind when you're setting compensation. The president wrote back and said, thanks for the positive feedback. It's great when board members recognize the hard work of our leadership team. What the president didn't know was that that committee chair had asked the vice president for Human Resources to provide compensation data for chief development officers at 10 peer institutions. What's going on there?
Getting out of our lane.
Yeah.
Overstepping.
Is that information available?
But here again, it's nuanced. Yes, out of your lane, but the opportunity to give feedback to the president is a positive piece of that story, right?
Yeah.
I was looking at you, thinking about...
But that isn't available information, huh?
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we often ask for comparative compensation, but I don't feel like we do end runs around people asking for it.
Right. You know, I don't know if you do it, but a lot of institutions, the board affirms every single salary decision. Not all do it, but some ratify. And the point is that you're not looking to change one. You're not looking to pull one out and say, so-and-so should be better compensated. But you are looking for patterns. You're looking often for compression issues. You're looking for why, when we say merit is important, are all of these the same percentage? You're looking for those kinds of patterns. So the data can be very important. It's what you do with it. Is it there for your understanding and asking for future-oriented questions? Or is it there because you think you're going to step up and make some kind of decision about it? So the third principle in the bucket of understanding governance is the idea of being an ambassador and an advocate for the institution. And here, you need to be careful. You can and should be an advocate for the institution. And you could be a bridge, you can also be a buffer from time to time. But you really need to know and respect university policies and positions on issues. If you're going to be an advocate, you want to do it in a coordinated way so that the message that is coming through to whomever you're advocating to, that is a unified message. You don't want 10 different messages going to the legislature, for example, when the university and the board have decided on a position and something that they're going to advocate for. So the communication, the interrelationships here are absolutely essential. But also need to be careful that as much as you want to be an ambassador, at the end of the day, the accountability function has to be more important than the ambassadorial advocacy function. That makes sense?
Yeah.
So again, questions you might ask? Do you know people who could be helpful to the institution that have not yet been brought to the institution's attention? Do you know what various constituents think about the institution? And are you aware of different points of view out there that could be important in terms of taking the institution into the future? Those kinds of things that you pick up in your personal and professional networks, communicated to the president and his team, can be very, very important. And you're getting them in ways that the administration can't. Now, when the president walks in the door, people know, but they may not know of your role. And so you're hearing things and the opportunity to observe things that can be very helpful to the institution is sitting right there in front of you. Questions about the first bucket, about understanding governance? Do you have a sense of how broad your responsibilities are? That, you know, many people think fiduciary means I've got to be worried about the finances. But it's a much bigger concept than that. Literally every single thing with this university's name on it is a part of your fiduciary duty. So the quality of academic programs, the sustainability of the financial model, the reputation of the institution, the community relationships, the business relationships, this isn't, the asset that you're responsible for is the University of Oregon and everything within it. And a lot of board members find that daunting and find it surprising. They didn't think it was such a broad role, but it is. And I saw your chair nodding about reputation. And think of what has played out across the country that has damaged reputations. We don't know if it's because of board action or inaction, but certainly the board has to take responsibility as the fiduciary for what has happened to tarnish those reputations. All right, let's move on then to the next bucket, which is leading by example. And here, we're looking at the need to uphold the highest standards of integrity. Now, there are others within the institution that are also expected to uphold these standards. So they're looking to board members to see that the board is leading by example. The greater good comes before any personal interest. And there are complications here, very practical complications. The donor who gave the major gift for a new football stadium might think that he has the right to name the head coach. And those are real situations that play out that boards have to figure out how to navigate. Have you had challenges in this realm?
I don't think so. I'm trying to, it's, I will say that our, fresh from our annual deep dive into ethics and, you know, how much you can treat me to lunch and that sort of thing, I feel like we get well steeped. The door's always open to ask questions of conflict of interest. But in terms of trying to think of challenges that we've had, naming opportunities or sometimes something like that that have come up, but it was previous to this board. And there were things that more came up to the foundation, I think. So I can't think of anything off the top of my head that's been that kind of a challenge. Ross?
You know, there have been situations in the athletic department where a donor has expressed an interest in certain admission decisions that would run counter to normal policy. And it was dealt with appropriately, but, you know.
And athletics, as you look across the country, athletics is an area where board members can quickly become fans and forget that they are fiduciaries. So there's a need for a lot of reminders in that category.
This is an interesting topic and we are a unique university, I think, because we have a number of substantial donors, number meaning a handful, that have been so generous to the university. And we're really fortunate because of their impeccable integrity to not create that situation because it, of course, could be created.
Yeah. It's a great story.
Yeah, it is.
So here's another quick vignette. For each of the last three years, the university has had a long waiting list for campus housing. A foundation board member, who's a well-respected real estate agent, suggested that the foundation consider purchasing an empty apartment building near the campus to alleviate the shortage. She was surprised when one of the other board members asked whether this would be a conflict of interest. She explained that she was not the seller's agent, but was simply sharing information she'd recently learned from a real estate colleague. Any problem here?
Call him.
Kevin might be disappointed. Like Kevin might be disappointed in us.
Depends, is there more to the story? If that, I mean, she's in a position...
That's all I got.
She's in a position to get information about a building that's up for sale and she shares that information. She's not the agent for the seller. If she was requesting to be the agent as the buyer, I think we'd talk to Kevin. But we'd probably be, at least, how do you hear about the idea?
You okay with that?
Not with the use of inside information for financial gain, no. But if you, if it was available openly and properly disclosed.
I put that in there because it's essentially not a problem. And I didn't want you to think that everyone that was coming at you was a problem.
Trick question.
Shake it up just a little bit. All right. Also here, leading by example, what we're talking about here is being independent and making informed judgment, not accepting recommendations without questions, but resisting the temptation to redo every detail. It's not helpful if you have expertise that you're not sharing. But at the end of the day, each trustee has to come to his or her independent decision about how to vote on something. At the end of the day, it's the majority vote that counts. And once the vote is taken, the expectation is that everyone gets behind the vote, even if you were on a different side of it. Because it's the board as the board. It's the collective of the board that has the authority. Any problems there? That's what we mean by thinking independently happens inside the boardroom, acting collectively happens outside.
I think that's what happened today. It was going to be challenging to be collectively behind a decision, even though it wasn't a gigantic decision. But I appreciate the candor that we had, you know, one-on-one, talking about what happened today. That was a little unusual.
And boards build a culture around this. You have, I think, from what I observed, built a culture that you trust the due diligence of your committees, that you have access to that information. And if you have questions, you have an opportunity, even if you're not on the committee, to ask those questions and get them resolved. But you really want to resist the temptation to redo the detailed work of the committee at the full board.
And the work of staff and faculty, that's more worried about that.
Exactly. And there are some boards that want to act as a committee of the whole, which is not a best practice because it does signal that you don't have confidence in your colleagues to do the work and to work through the deeper discussions in the committee work. And then the last principle here in the bucket of leading by example has to do with justice, equity, and inclusion. And I appreciated the conversation that I heard earlier about accessibility. And I know some institutions are also talking about DEIB, belonging, and finding opportunities for that to be more embedded in their DEI policies. But ultimately, this is your responsibility as a fiduciary, as a board. And I think it's important, well, we heard this morning from the vice chair of your senate about the challenges of faculty who do a lot of invisible work because they are representatives of a group that students will gravitate to. Thinking back, I was reminded of the fact when I was listening to him that I had three children in four years before I got tenure. And I think every single female graduate student in the university wanted to talk to me about how I could still be alive and do that. But, I mean, and that's a huge piece of workload that, and these were serious conversations. People really wanted, these women really wanted these conversations. And it takes an enormous amount of time. And faculty of color particularly are inundated with requests to be mentors, to be sponsors, just to be a listening ear. And there isn't credit for it. And it's very hard to think about how to account for it, too. But recognizing the lived experiences of others and understanding that each and every one of us has our own journey. And that journey creates our assumptions, which may or may not be helpful in a particular situation. So trying to make more evident in your own mind what those lived experiences are and how they may, bias is the word really, how they may influence how you think about an issue becomes really hard work and really important work. I see lots of heads shaking. How many of you have had the experience where you've really had to step back and question, is there a different way to think about this that's different from my own experience? Are you willing to talk about it?
It happens all the time, but I don't have a specific, I mean, yeah, but it happens all the time. I mean, I think it's healthy to kind of question your assumptions on a regular basis. So it's actually intentional that I do that.
And being willing to have a dialogue about it, you know, that's not, that's not been my experience, but I'm really interested in your experience and helping to understand it.
Right. I think that where it's come up, sometimes infrequently, is a student request for a grade change or something like that, you know? And my perception of the merit of the request and their perception and being open to, you know, engage about that.
Well, and we did this yesterday with the conversation around the conduct change, right? I think a lot of us were thinking of this from when we were in college at that particular time and not thinking about, well, I will say for me, I said that loud, I didn't go to college with Google Docs. So I don't know what this is really, you know, how this is really going down right now. So really understanding, you know, what's happening on campus right now was a really big part of the conversation. But it took some acknowledging that I'm thinking of this from my own frame, which is not the same as the frame that's, you know, going on right now in schools.
And one of the things that many board members have difficulty with is changing the frame of reference from what it was like when they were in college to what it's like now. And sometimes I've seen boards have really helpful retreats around bringing in experts who are generational researchers, who can talk about what's driving certain cohorts, certain age cohorts in today's world of higher education can be very helpful.
Yeah, that'd be great.
That would be great.
Well, and I think having someone like Julia, us being one of the few universities that you mentioned that does have a student on our board is... that you mentioned that does have a student on our board is enormous, because in things like this, where it's affecting our student body, hearing her voice is very important to us.
And just to be clear, a lot of institutions do have students on their board. What is rare is to have all three, the faculty, the student, and the staff member. That's, only three in the country have that full complement on the board. Let's move then, so we've talked about understanding governance, we've talked about leading by example, and you see from the chart, I mean, there's 27 cells here, so for each one of these principles, there's a sense that you can look at it in terms of what it means to be a fiduciary, what it means to be the team member that is the collective of the board, and what it means to be an individual. And if you're intrigued to dig deeper, the publication is really very, very rich. This really captures the whole thing, but you, as a member of A G B, you can get it free off the website and read the entire publication, so. All right, so we'll move on to the last one, which is thinking strategically. And here, probably this is something that's pretty comfortable and familiar for you, you're in the business of constantly scanning the landscape, assessing what's going on, but the key question here for board members is, what does it mean for us? All right, we see something out there in the landscape of higher education across the nation, or the general economy, or something specific to Oregon, then the key strategic question is, is that going to have an impact on us? And if so, what will that be? How will we deal with it? Maybe it's an opportunity, maybe it's a challenge. But then, thinking about the future and how the institution will fit into that future, that's the key to strategic thinking, and most boards don't do it very well. They don't take the time to step back and ask those questions. When we do board assessments, it's the single most frequently observed statement by boards that they say, we just don't take the time to think strategically, we're too busy with our business, and we don't step back and think more strategically, because you have to carve out time to do that. In order to do good strategic thinking, you have to understand the past and the present in order to think about what those implications might be for the future, because the implications for you will be different for an institution that's differently situated, has a different mission, exists in another state. What do you think about that last bullet there?
Not sure I understand it.
Me either.
Well, you're changing industries, right? For those of you who are not in higher education, you're coming from a different profession, a different background, right? So you're changing an industry, and your role has changed in terms of elevating to becoming the fiduciary. So, the point is that it makes your role really complicated, because you're dealing in an entirely different context that's not just one dimension.
It's that steep learning curve, I think.
Pardon?
It's a steep learning curve that is part of the onboarding that I think we're trying to do, but...
Just we wear a different, you're saying we wear a different hat when we're in this room?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I take, the word profession feels like it should be position, like we're taking a different position, not necessarily profession.
Yeah, I just thought it meant we were changing, like, the professions of the state, you know, like, creating a new one, and I just didn't understand it.
Yeah, that's something we ought to consider, revising, that's a good, that's a very good point, a good idea. But you might ask yourself, as you're thinking about your own board service, are there commonalities between what you do on the board and what you do? Because in many cases, there may well be. And I already mentioned thinking about how the industry has changed since you were a part of it before as a student or a graduate student. Another question, I think, that comes up here in thinking about this principle, is do you have the information that you need to function effectively as a board member?
We may not have it, but I will say that staff is instantly getting it when we ask for it, incredibly responsive to that, so I've always, yeah, it's a very open door.
It does take time, too. There's definitely, every year, you learn more, just like you would in any job, so there is some value.
So, you're building layers.
Our term is with two four-year terms, you know, it puts longevity, because you do it.
And you're really hitting your stride when your term is over, right? So, here's the next one in this category of thinking strategically, and here, there's lots of questions, lots of questions to be asked here. How well do you really understand the higher education business model? Do you understand, for example, that it costs more to deliver than we're charging in tuition?
Yeah, we get that one.
The compact, the public compact, is that somebody will make up that difference so that you can survive, and the somebody is the public and philanthropy. And there are variations, public-private partnerships, et cetera, but the clear, most people wonder why tuition is so high and do not understand that it costs more to deliver what you're delivering than the price. And how many businesses operate like that?
Not for long.
Not for long, right? So, understanding that is very, very important. And here, the key really is to think about long-term sustainability. A lot of smaller, more fragile institutions, most of them private, are dipping into their endowment right now in ways that they don't normally do to try to mitigate the impact of the COVID pandemic, and there's a lot of angst about that, but it's why endowments exist, as long as it's not the solution for the entire problem. If there truly is a structural deficit, and the institution is unwilling to deal with it, and it's constantly sort of bailing itself out, that's a problem. But to understand that our present circumstance may be different, and we need to do something, but we can't take our eye off the long term, that's what's really important for boards to be talking about.
Can I ask a quick question?
Interesting pipeline, a number of us have served on the foundation board first, so we get the philanthropy piece, for sure. I will say that we couldn't have picked, when we go back to the cells that we need to fill on the board, it's gonna be big shoes to fill Ross's, you couldn't have asked for somebody that's more of a financial geek than Ross, but what the beauty of it is that he's worked with Jamie to create some tools that we've all, we're saying we're too dumb to understand what Jamie's saying, would you please lay it out? The board, the full board, hasn't seen a whole lot of yet this year, but it's, I think that is another one of the strengths of these boards, is to say, explain this in detail, how it affects us, and how is it gonna look next year? How's it gonna look when China creates all of its own, you know, universities, or COVID?
Playing through those scenarios, and thinking forward about the scenarios, if this, then we are prepared to do that.
Guarantee tuition was a perfect one, because the first time it came forward, we rejected it, because it wasn't fleshed out well enough. This time, I think it's worked beautifully.
Right.
Is that piece about it costing more than we charge, something that you talked with the Senate Education Committee about when you gave a presentation, or is that just, was that just for us?
No, we didn't. The focus was on governance, not on financing, but we did make the point in the report that you cannot overlook that Oregon has a significant pattern of diminished public support for higher education. So, we weren't asked there, but we personally felt it was very important, and it did not come up a lot in the interviews, quite frankly, but we thought, from what we know nationally, that it was important to put that in. We didn't get any pushback on it, or any significant questioning on it when we did the testifying.
Thank you.
This is a quick opportunity to norm that. Jamie, what was the recent figure that we got? Were 43rd per head in the, for university funding?
Off the top of my head, I want to say it was 46th, but...
Forty-sixth in the country and per student funding, yeah.
Yeah, and just to clarify, it's because we had always been seeing numbers that mixed community college funding and four-year university funding into higher education funding, and based on those numbers, I believe that Oregon was somewhere in the 30s, but then, when more recently, we had access to data that split apart funding per student for community colleges and funding per student for four-year institutions, and there was a significant difference with community colleges being much, much higher than the average, and four-year institutions being much, much worse.
Yeah, my intent was not to derail this conversation, it's just every time we have an opportunity, which is what I heard Troy saying, it's like, are we communicating around that? But it's very important for the board to know that we have new information that, and this is not the University of Oregon, remember, we're the funded the least per student in the state, but as a state, we're funding per head at the 46 out of 50, so that's not good.
The data that we have in the report is from F Y 2020. Oregon ranks 40th nationally for appropriations per F T E for all public four-year universities. The national average was $8,636 per F T E, and Oregon's was 5,582.
I kind of got us off track, Carol, I'm sorry.
You can delve into budgets.
Right. Well, we're nearly finished here, and then we'll do some summing up conversation. Boards are always asking, how do I know if I'm really operating at a strategic level? As I said, no question is a poor question, you need to get details to make sure you do your due diligence, but you can use this kind of list of criteria in thinking about whether or not you're really operating at a strategic level. Is it something that's really related to mission? Is it something that's really important relative to the quality of what's happening in the education programs? Is it really about sustainability? Is it really about the presidential leadership? If it's related to those four, you can be almost guaranteed that you're operating at a strategic level. Final principle, and here again, in the bucket of thinking strategically, I've said several times that it's, no question is a poor question, but some questions are better than others. And you want to make sure that you are probing, that when you're in a debate, you're focused on issues, not personalities, that you have enough information, and that you really know where the resources are to get information. You know, these are almost silly examples, but you can see that there's a difference, there's a different level of sophistication there. Those management questions are okay, there's nothing wrong with them, but they're just not at that strategic level that other questions could be. And there are also some questions that are even more catalytic than those. So, test yourself from time to time, challenge each other. Are we really, are we really asking more governance-type questions? Again, those details may be important and may feed into those bigger questions, but it's one of the hardest things that boards do, is ask good questions, ask the more sophisticated, the more catalytic questions. So, wrapping up, thinking through these principles and all these 27 opportunities here, from governance, leading by example, thinking strategically, all the principles, thinking three layers, fiduciary, team of the board, individual contributions, remembering that the individual contributions roll up to the board effectiveness. Here are some individual contributions that characterize effective trustees, and these have been woven into our discussion in a variety of ways. What's your takeaway from this discussion?
This has been really, really interesting, congratulations. I've sat through many presentations, none of them, not none, but many of them have been less...
Did it give you a headache, did it make your brain?
No. It did engender some questions, and I'm not sure that I'll get them elevated to the quality of good questions, but are you gonna make this presentation to the other members of the institutions, the boards of the other members of the institutions here in Oregon, or are we...
If invited, I would certainly do that, and I have, and it's the sort of thing that would be good, needn't be me doing it, but it's the sort of thing that would be very good at a governor's conference. I've worked with, I've worked with all of the Oregon institutions over this period of eight or 10 years, that you've been involved in this experiment, and of course, did a really deep dive for the education committee's study, talked to, again, a lot of people at a lot of institutions.
So, this board operates, I think, at a very high level, very collegial, but I have heard of boards that have obstreperous members, so do you have advice, should that happen at some point?
Make sure you have a strong board chair, because it's the chair that really, the president should not have to police the board. It should be the board that takes care of its own problems, and the first line of defense, if you will, is the board chair. It helps if you have something that you might think about as a commitment statement from board members, and I know boards that have such a statement, and they actually sign it every year. There's a symbolism to signing it, and then that becomes the template. If there's a problem, the chair can go back and say, you committed to attending meetings, being prepared, being civil in your discussion, attacking issues, not people, you signed off on all of this, and you're not, you're not performing, you're not measuring up to the commitment that you made.
Do you have an example of one of those that you can share with us?
I can certainly send a couple, yeah. And the dialogue around what do we want to put in our commitment statement is very, very powerful, because you're basically saying, we want to be intentional about what kind of board culture we want to build, and, you know, culture is not just some amorphous, hard-to-get-your-arms-around concept, it's made up of concrete behaviors. If I say Disney culture, I bet everybody in this room is going to have four or five of the same operational, concrete characteristics that make up that culture. You can build a culture, you can be intentional, say, this is what we want to behave like as a board, and then those behaviors translate into how you think about issues, which translate into the actions you take, which translate into the results that you're getting. So, it's very much a bottom-line kind of experience to think intentionally about culture.
It helps build expectations for the whole institution and how it should behave and interact and be respectful, for instance. If I could just very briefly bring both sides of your presentation together, which, again, I will reiterate this is excellent, it comes to the central part of the... It comes to the central part of the fiduciary in your, in your statement, that this is a very broad concept, and people have immediately highlighted on reputation. And I think that, you know, rapid reputational loss is one thing that we talked about. I think one of the board's interests is continuing isolation of reputation as well. And when I think about a point of conflict for the board and people that will come to the board or the desire through the legislative process to expand the board or make it democratic, it is really that balance of what we're trying to achieve, because a lot of that is time horizon-based. And so, a lot of folks, it's not that they don't care about reputations, that they just care about the immediate instead of the trajectory. And, you know, that's, that's a conversation that we always have to maintain. So, I do think understanding that context is important. One thing I've never heard us talk about is the return on investment. Not, we talked about students and whether or not they're going to make money in their careers, but reputational return on your investment is actually tremendous at institutions. When you start at an institution and it's pretty good, and then you graduate and it becomes really good, you have this, all of a sudden, you have this sense of pride or whatever. I can't even imagine what the people who rooted for the Ducks in the sixties, now they have this point of pride when they wear their Duck gear around, right? And so, there are many examples of this, actually, nationally, where you get this huge return on investment. So, it's not just the immediate versus whatever. All of us, our faculty, our staff, and especially our students, benefit from continuing aspiration towards greatness because you'll be associated with this institution forever, and so, there's a great return on that. But I do think that's the, frequently, this immediate versus the long-term is where the board sits in their responsibility.
It's a really nice point, yeah. I mean, and you think, for example, about the Ivies and their reputation, and graduates from those institutions are perceived to have a leg up the day they walk out the door because of what's been built up over time. Some of it may be not deserved, but it's there, and it functions that way. I'm trying to be sensitive to your time, and I know we were a little off schedule. I don't even know how long we've been doing this.
I don't think it's too... Yeah, and it's not your fault if we're off schedule, but what I do want to say, for the sake of the students that have come up, we will take up the presidential search resolution after lunch, so we'll do that. I do want to say, new members, are you getting the AGB magazine? Okay, we'll make sure that that's, that's been, it's a perk.
Are old members getting it?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, no, old members aren't?
It's iconic, I know.
Okay, well, okay. And you should be sure that every board's member's email is registered, because all of the AGB resources are free to all board members when the institution is a member.
Great, we are a member, and I think that's just an oversight out of our secretary office, but we will get you those, and it's a combination of online resources, of course, and the quarterly magazine.
It's six times a year, trusteeship, right.
And then, there's a national convention that is good to take a look at and see if there might be something.
And this year, and it's always in April, there's one for foundations in January, but the one, the National Conference on Trusteeship is always in April, and this year, it's in San Diego. So, you don't, you don't need to, don't need to change time zones.
Carol, thank you. Any other last-minute thoughts for Carol? Yeah, Lily?
I just wanted to speak up and say kudos to Tim and team. I, as a new trustee, I've just been through a lot of orientation proceedings, and it aligns virtually completely with the things that you've brought up, and I think that's a really good sign. I don't know what the onboarding experience was for other board members, but that's really encouraging to see information from 2020 to today, what I've been through is together, so, thank you.
Whew, it's a good thing we're together, right?
Well, when you come back in four years to see what great work this next board has done, I will be there to listen, so, thank you, Carol, really appreciate it, and the positive, constructive critique and everything else. There's a lot that we can act on on this, so, thank you.
And we'll, we'll give the presentation to Tim, so you have it for your files.
Perfect, thank you. We will recess for lunch and reconvene at...
One thirty.
One thirty, okay, thank you.
Our great Board Secretary, Tim. And then communication, kind of doubling down on the engagement, making sure we're communicating to campus and to all of our stakeholders. Again, we are an important asset of the state of Oregon, so the folks who are invested in the search are on this campus and off this campus. So I understand that almost as we speak, there's a website, I'm looking at Tim being launched, I guess is the right word, that will start that communication process. Brenna, I don't know if you wanted to?
So assuming an affirmative action, we will be announcing search committee members in the next month or so. Just need to be asking and getting answers back. Any comments at this point? I'd like to ask for a motion to establish this, thank you.
Looks like it.
Oh, good. You're making me nervous. Do we need a roll? We don't need a roll call. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, abstain, thank you very much. We've got some work to do, girls. And now for the excitement of the day. Leah's here. Leah, I'm sorry.
Really looking at his watch.
Leah Ladley is our internal auditor. She came from the South, if you will, at a moment of complete shutdown. And so we're saying, just try to find the internal parts to audit. But we're glad to see you back in operations and welcome and look forward to hearing your report.
So thank you for your time. Can you, can you hear me? Am I close enough? Okay. Thank you for your time this afternoon. I know without a doubt that I am between you and the door. And I'm aware of that. So I'll just kind of, I've provided some materials for you, and so I'll kind of walk through and give you the highlights of the risk assessment and the audit plan, the proposed plan. And then I'll give you the highlights from the annual report. I won't keep you and talk to you about everything, because I know you don't want to hear that. You have your materials. So we'll just kind of walk through and give the highlights. And then at the end, we'll, we'll wind up with the governance, the required governance from the IIA. So you've heard me say this before, but I'll say it again. Risk assessment is a continuous activity. It's not just something we do in the spring. As a matter of fact, if you could read my notes on this page back here, where I just kind of listened to things and just kind of made a few notes. It's things that I want to go check on, things that I've heard today and yesterday in the board meetings. And it's just things that, from that risk assessment lens, that we're always looking at things. When we look at risk assessment, there are various inputs. There are things external to the university and things internal to the university, and they're both important. So I would say on this list, this is just some of the highlights. But on this list, probably a COA and other higher education internal auditor peers is probably high on the external list. And then internal would be the CIRM-C risk exposure matrix, that I know you've heard presentations on that. That's, that's very valuable to us, as well as the CIRM-C meetings. We had one this week, and they're just very insightful. Also, the Office of Internal Auditor insights. So every auditor gets exposed to things when they're doing an audit. And they, we have ways of tracking those little nuggets that don't really belong in that audit, but we don't need to forget about them. And so those things also turn out to be very valuable and sometimes lead to audit projects. Sometimes they just lead to questions and comments from people, but sometimes they lead to audit projects. So I've provided you some highlights from the proposed audit plan. And when you read your materials, you noticed that there was tier one, tier two, and tier three. So tier one is what we hope to initiate this year, but inevitably, we'll go to one of those areas and we'll say, "Hey, we're here to help you. We're here to audit." And they will have just undergone some major transition. Either they have a new application, or they have new leadership, or there's some stumbling block, and it's, it makes it not the best time to do the audit. If it's reasonable, and if it's not just a, hey, you don't, nothing to see here, move along, then we will switch out the projects, and we'll bring that to you at our quarterly updates. If it's something huge, then Ginebra, as Audit Committee Chair, will get a call and we'll talk about it. But I don't anticipate that. That's, that's very, very rare. So you have, before you, the proposed audit plan and the objectives are in there. Tim, do we want to make a motion now, or open for questions, or at the end?
At the end.
At the end, is that what that means? Okay. So the plan is there. So we'll talk about the annual report highlights. So one of the things that we did, some of you newer members may not be aware, but higher ed historically monitors the management actions by doing a repeat audit. They call it a follow-up audit. And they'll do it two or three years after the original audit. And the problem is, when you have limited resources and you have changes going on, you don't always get around to doing that work. So one of the first things I did when I got here was change that operation to a more timely follow-up and feedback. So we ask management, at the time we're developing a report, to give us a target completion date. And target completion date means when you think you'll be done, and I can come back and look at it and, and say, yeah, I agree, you're done. That's when we start our follow-up. If it's June 30th, we might talk to them during June, but we really start in June 30th and say, "You said you'd write a policy, you said you'd do whatever, and let's talk about whether the risk has been mitigated." So we do it more timely now, instead of a scheduled project two or three years from now. So what I'll tell you about the monitoring, monitoring the activities. Twenty-seven recommendations were closed during the fiscal year, four since our last meeting. There are no university high, high priority items that have been reported or are open, so there's nothing there. We do hear regularly from management, we do seem to be making progress. There are quite, quite, there are more tracking towards closure than not yet started. So we're, so I feel pretty good about that. The other thing is the hotline. So there's some data in your, in your materials, but we've received 17 hotline items this year. And most of those get delegated to another area. So it's very seldom does it stay in internal audit, because usually it's a, belongs more appropriately in human resources or Title IX or OICRC. So we share that information with them, and they do the investigation.
How does that compare to what we've had in past years? Is it more or less the same?
Yeah, so it's, it's very consistent with prior year. It kind of fall, it's not out, an outlier. And it also, we do, we do, in the Pacific Northwest, we all share our counts with each other. And so it also falls in the realm with other universities in the Pacific Northwest. So I don't, I don't feel like we're getting too many. I did notice a little bit of a decline this year, and I don't know if, that made me think maybe it's time to go back out and make sure people are aware. So do, do an awareness campaign about the hotline may be appropriate. And, and that will probably fall in line, because in your materials, I mentioned that there, there are new features coming for the hotline. So we're getting more players into it, not just internal audit. And everybody's data will be properly segregated. And I think that will probably, we'll see an uptick in cases probably from that. But I wouldn't let that alarm you. I don't think that that means misbehavior has ticked up. I think just awareness and getting it all centralized, because there are many camp, many units on campus that receive reports, and they all track them differently. And so you're not getting the full picture. When I tell you 17, that's not the full picture. That's just what I know about. Good question, though. What else were we going to talk about? Oh, we're fully staffed as of the end of the year. So we are, this time last year, I couldn't say that. If you remember, we hired two people in October. And so we are stronger than we were last year. And I hope to say that every year. We're stronger and better every year. I would say, though, to be perfectly honest, we're a little lean, even though we're fully staffed, because we are new. Some of us are really new to audit, and we are not yet credentialed. We're still getting our feet wet, but we're getting there, and we're stronger than we were last year. So we're making good progress. And we, we do still also rely on Baker Tilly somewhat for IT, IT services. They're, they're, they're for us. Now, the final slide. I know you're excited. Governance communications. So it's important to know our organizational independence is confirmed, and this is from the IIA standards, these four things that I need to talk to you about. This means that we report high enough in the organization that people pay attention when we knock on their door. And that's what organizational independence means. Impairment to independence or objectivity, there's been none. That means that we are objective when we do our work. Part of that objectivity comes when one person does an audit, and another person reviews that audit, and make sure the papers are there and the facts are there, and it's not just that person's opinion. So that helps you stay objective. There've been no, there's nothing I need to disclose to you about non-conformance with the applicable auditing standards. We follow the standards. And as far as resolution of management's acceptance of risk, there's been no instances of excessive acceptance of residual risk, which means we made a suggestion to them, and they said, no, we're not going to do it. None of that was excessive. We did have one, you'll see it in your reporting package, and it's fine. We, we agree with the acceptance of risk. It's the right thing to do. So do you have any questions? I know I went through a lot in just a couple of minutes. Do you have any questions for me?
Yeah, so I had a question on, on cyber.
Yes.
Because that's, for us, it's our single biggest risk. So where does that roll up?
So.
Cyber.
So there's information security that, and we have an IT auditor who works on that. So we, we could do a cyber audit, but that would be so massive, I don't think it would be valuable. What, what's more valuable is to break down components of that risk and do audits in those areas. And that's what you'll see.
Okay. And so it rolls up under your group, the, the review of?
Auditing it, yes. Yes.
Well, largely outsourced to Baker Tilly?
Well, largely outsourced to Baker Tilly with Katie's assistance. So Katie is our associate IT auditor, and she would be the boots on the ground, and, and facilitating that and taking more and more ownership of it as she grows as an auditor.
Does, does the university have insurance against the?
So we do have insurance. We do have struggles with insurance. I, I don't know if you've heard an insurance market update recently?
It's gotten cheaper, right?
And cover stopped. Much more nowadays. But yes, we do have a policy.
And so my board has asked me, once a year, to have a carve-out to talk about info security. So I'm, I'm just wondering whether or not that might be of interest here. It's a significant issue across the world.
So I have experienced that in the past as well. I've had boards say, we need to hear about cyber. And so there's two ways to look at that. I can bring you a report on cyber, but that's kind of them telling me what to say, and I don't know that we want to do that. It may be more clear to bring them and let them talk about what their challenges are.
So the firm, the Tilly firm is an independent?
That's an independent audit firm that we contract with for IT audit services.
But are you saying that, listening from our IT department about what we're doing? Right. Because you're auditing to make sure that they're doing something.
Right.
And we could hear from them about what they're doing. I think Tim's point's a good one, though, in terms of our oversight, to make sure there is ongoing scrutiny over that, which is a huge risk for every company in the world.
It is, it is. You're right.
Yeah, so it's probably a combination of our chief technology officer and Andre and Jamie.
Yeah, and I was going to say, we could, we could definitely bring that group to speak with you. And through our strategic investment process, one of the areas for, I think, two cycles in a row where we've made big investments is cyber, in trying to, to give them more staff and resources, because obviously, it's a huge threat.
Yeah, I'm sure the, I'm sure the university's doing the right thing. It's just, we probably ought to know about that at least once a year, I would think.
I agree.
The other thing, I, I would agree with that. Thank you, Tim, for bringing it up. Leah, I see on the plan is the research contracts process review. Is that a follow-up to some degree to the challenges we had in the research office a few years ago? And, and I guess, you know, sort of a general question, now that we have new leadership there, how do we make sure that, you know, we don't, that we keep, we move forward and we don't slip back?
So, so it's, it's slightly different from, from what, from the, the area that you've mentioned, because that area is reviewed by someone else. And so I don't want to duplicate that work. We might take a little bit different look if we did choose to go there. But what this is looking at is not the grants necessarily, which get looked at by the external financial statement auditor, but the contracts. So the research contracts may flow through a different governance process, or may flow through different accounting procedures. We don't know yet. And so that's what that would be looking at. How the contracts are managed.
Yeah, and my, my bigger question is just like, how do we not? And we may have, be set up just fine, but we don't lose the institutional knowledge that got us to a much better place from a research perspective and compliance.
Unfortunately, these things do tend to cycle, but we, we have the staff in place. And, and actually, AR, one of the benefits is he, he comes from a similar kind of position at the associate level. And also, historically, what we've done in the research space is to employ not auditors, but external consultants to look at our compliance operations and to make sure that we have the staffing and training that's necessary. This is one area where we are sometimes at a competitive disadvantage for, for staff. It's a specialized area, and it's more and more, you can satisfy these roles remotely. And so people who want to live in Eugene can work at Stanford and still live in Eugene. And so, so that's something that we're really working on, because the, it, there's a lot of salary pressure in the space as well.
Leah, can you clarify?
Leah, can you clarify, because the, the audit issues being referred to were part of the external audit?
External audit, yes.
And we go through a cycle where they will look back on research intently, either next year or the year after, because there's a mandated cycle.
Got it. Yeah, and it's just becoming, like, a bigger part of our revenue and much more important, and, you know, anytime you have leadership change, you just worry that, like, well, all that great learning that we did in a not easy way, we just don't want to lose it.
And the control issue over the, the grants, that was reported a couple of years ago, came up through the financial statement audit in Simpson.
I'll just highlight, there's lots of, everything you say is correct, so let's make sure that we go back and recapture whatever reporting that was done and, and make that available. Another feature of this that the board has acted on, and Jamie and many others have worked so hard on, is the shared services approach of, of doing this. And so we have the centralized research office, but the, some of the controls are in the individual research units, and I think we're starting to look at how we can make sure that there's not a single heroic individual in an institute that has to do all financial accounting and oversight and pushback on faculty when they violate rules and things like that. So nobody, well, nobody, it's not an institution that's really welcoming of that kind of idea, but this, the board's role in advocating and mandating it and the audit function of why this is important is, I think, been critical for us to articulate why these actions are being taken, and I think people understand why that all makes sense.
And then the last question I just have, you talk about your team being young, and I'm curious, and not, I think you said certified or licensed or whatever, I'm just curious, what's the professional development plan, so that, you know, you do have a strong, fully functioning...
Right, so we do have plans to get them certified, but, but I don't want to enter, it's, it's so much easier to pass the certified internal auditor exam after you have a little experience, because then when you're studying for the exam, it, the first part is really a lot about the standards, but it doesn't ask you, what does the standard for objectivity say? It kind of gives you a scenario, and you have to be able to play into that and say, which one of these is the most objective? And so, once you get a little experience, you're much more set up for success on that exam, because you, it gives you the aha moment of, that's why we do it that way. And so, at the right time, we'll introduce and start encouraging people to take those exams and give them the study materials and help them, support them through that role.
Great, thank you.
And there is an experience time also for the exams. You can't just pass the test and be one, you have to have experience in there as well, as part of it. Anybody else have a question?
Yeah, and so may I please have a motion to approve the resolution to approve the audit plan for the year?
Move it.
Goodie.
I'll second.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, go home. Okay. That is the end of business for today. Any, any comments to wrap up? Thank you, everybody, it's been an intense 36 hours, and we've got a lot of work ahead of us, and I really look forward to this year. Thank you, we're adjourned.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Nice job, Ginebra. Seven minutes early for your first board meeting.